We demand of you, stand up for our police department and the union. Support our DPW worker and our hard-working firefighters. Thank you.
Next in line is Tasha Expendice. Please identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Tasha Expendice. I'm the Regional Program Director, I mean Manager for Raising a Reader in Lawrence, and I'm also a resident at 499 Havel Street. I actually been in Lawrence for the last seventeen years. I went to Lawrence High School, I went to the Arlington School, and went to Clark and chose to come back here. And one of the things that has been a big influence as a resource for me, as a student, especially in my education, has been the Lawrence Public Library. Now, within the last nine years, the Lawrence Public Library has suffered a lot of costs, cuts, which has downsized the staff to half of what it is. The library is no longer, at least the main library where most of the residents have, need these resources. It's not open during the weekends, especially during the summer. It closes at five. Seeing that there's no, in the proposal, in the budget, there's no discussion about that changing. And I think it's concerning. It's concerning because there's a lot of, especially there are nonprofits out there, myself, mine included, that are interested in bringing more literacy awareness in the community. There's a new team that was formed recently where we're trying to communicate better, collaborate more efficiently, and bring more resources to the library. But it's, we need the support of the library, receiving the funds that they need to be able to have staffing available, to be able to have the hour, business hours open, so that we can bring more resources into the community. The other concern is that other programs have suffered within the library because of these cuts. Staff that were before, used to be available to look for more funding so that there will be more books available at the library, they're no longer, they no longer have the time to be able to go and apply for funds. They no longer have time to go to schools, to first graders, to give them library cards, which used to be a very important part for children in this community. And I just want you guys to please either take into consideration or either talk to nonprofits that are interested in being able to invest more time and help to bring the attention and the highlight of the library as a resource, instead of cutting down more of the, before it, we don't have a space to actually really do what we need to do. So, thank you.
Dick Russell?
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside 34 Cross Street in the city. First off, I would like to correct a bit of erroneous information that I gave you, counsel, at the council meeting relative to one of Tony Okoko's neighbors. The business license that I gave you was either wrong or changed. Here is the proper number, 156-608. I think Lilian handed, or is in the process of handing out this that was printed from the state's website for our home improvement contractors. Now, when is somebody going to investigate this individual's home improvement business that appears to be run out of his home? Why do I keep hearing crickets when I ask this question? Next, there's been mention of allowing LGH the use of the Bailey Street Fire Station as a base for their ambulance operation. Is that neighborhood zone for that type of an operation? Mention has been made of the city leasing the property to LGH. Will the city be responsible for repairs and maintenance, maintenance, if this, to this facility, if this idea comes to fruition? Is the facility old and, is the facility big enough to hold all of the ambulance required to properly cover the city? While I'm on the LGH kick, how come it appears that they, who have a sizable bank account, are getting a break on a no-bid contract and no payment towards the, the operation of the emergency call center? Again, I hear the cricket chorus. Continuing, why is both City Hall and Local 146th Firefighters Union less than forthcoming about the amounts of money remaining in the various payroll accounts in the Lawrence Fire Department's Fire Suppression Unit? I'm being charitable by saying less than forthcoming. Again, I hear the cricket chorus. Finally, what is the reason for the time delay from the Lawrence Police Dispatcher to the Lawrence Fire Department dispatching requested equipment? Twice in six weeks, I have heard calls go from the LPD radio system involving a request for the Lawrence Fire Department only to have to wait six minutes before equipment is dispatched by the Lawrence Fire Department. In both cases, it was not seri, a serious situation. But Mayor Rivera knows about the second situation, Chief Marsh knows about the first. Again, will this be another cricket chorus answer? I don't know if the City of Lawrence has a press information officer or not, but my suggestion would be to hire somebody whose first name is Jiminy, who better to be the voice of the cricket chorus around here. I thank you for your time tonight. But, as a postscript, I'm wondering if the online location of the city council's meetings on the website could be better publicized. I had to really search to find it, and there's no mention that they had been changed to, from whatever it was, to the YouTube operation. Thank you.
Jeffrey Petrello?
Good evening, city councilors. My name is Jeffrey Petrello, and I live at 341D South Broadway in Lawrence, Mass. On April 15th, I alluded that subsequent documentation will be delivered very soon to finalize the building commissioner's statements, and the purpose is so that nobody can ever say "that was never said," and thereby place our family as making what is called libelous accusations, when in fact, the building commissioner's statement is in fact, a factual statement. What I'm referring to is a statement that was made by Building Commissioner Peter Blanchett on Friday, March 21, 2014, pertaining to an alleged illegal demolition and excavation of a granite curbstone and city sidewalk whereby Commissioner Blanchett confirmed these allegations through various statements which are supported in two separate documents dated April 1, 2014, and April 21, 2014, which have been signed and notarized and provided to the city council, I believe it was May 6th, as evidence to wit. Despite what you might have been told, after a two-day search, no permits of any kind exist in my office, in the Inspection Services Department, or any code inspector's desk or filing cabinets, or in the DPW/Highway Director's Office, which would have indicated or have allowed your neighbor to demolish or excavate a granite curbstone or city sidewalk back in September 2005 because no permits of any kind could be found. In a se, in a subsequent document dated April 21, 2014, that was created to both validate four critical and well-outlined statements made by Commissioner Blanchett on pages one and two, and furthermore advise and request signatures from three city officials to validate these statements for the purposes of, one, so that no city officials can ever accuse the Petrello family of making false and/or libelous statements, either to the city or against my neighbor. And so, and two, so that there can never exist the opportunity for any city official to later recant or make various story changes which would be akin to "we never said that," and thereby place the Petrello family in the same libelous position. On May 6th and on May 12th, I paid a personal visit to the city attorney's office and was told that the city attorney has not got around to looking at your documents. For your information, these documents were delivered on April 23, 2014. I find this as an excuse or a stalling tactic, and I'm requesting city councilors with documents in hand to do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Petrello.
Thank you.
The next and last person in line is William Green.
Good evening, councilors. I'd like to briefly touch on one issue, which would be the matter of my discipline. At no point during the hearing, when I requested a public hearing, did I ever allege that I was disciplined because of discrimination, or because it was related to some sort of discriminatory practice. I did not. They were my actions alone, and I accepted full responsibility for them at the time. So, the allegation that I'm hiding behind some sort of claim of discrimination is just baseless. The reality is, I did something for which I paid a ninety-day penalty. As far as I'm concerned, the issue is settled. But if we are going to talk about discipline and conduct, you know, because officers are held to a higher standard, should we look into the fact that we do have an officer, an official, a supervisor, that was placed under arrest? If any of the claims that I've made up to this point have been false, then charge me with that, accuse me of lying. I have not. My primary goal here has always been to work to improve relations between the police department, the community, and City Hall. That has been and remains my primary goal. But if we're going to allow one mistake to negatively affect the rest of my career as a police officer, then I ask each and every one of you to personally reflect on your lives, and have you ever made a mistake? Has anyone that you know ever made a mistake? If what I have done has been so heinous, charge me and fire me. But it is not. It is settled. And I personally believe that it is paramount to the health of this community that we, as community, police officers, and elected officials, work together to restore hope. Hope. Why? Because anybody here know anyone who has ever been arrested before? Should we write them off? They were arrested, they made a mistake. We don't give up hope. If we give up hope on me and on those in the community, even those drug addicts who don't want to be drug addicts, do they really? Then we give up hope on ourselves and our community. Thank you.
I would like a motion to take Document 180, 14 out of, so much in favor, and it has been properly seconded. Were in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Mr. LaPlante?
So, before, as we all get, yeah, you guys, okay? I just want to say that this is the first week, we're going to be doing this in two more city council meetings where we start focusing on the achievers of our higher, our institutional, educational institutions in our city of Lawrence. Tonight, we have before us a gentleman who is an achiever at Greater Lawrence, I'm sorry, Northern Essex Community College. And, and with, between Councilor Almonte and myself, we've sponsored this because we want to highlight what good work he does. Before I hand it over to Councilor Almonte, I want to introduce Dr. Naomi Campbell, who is the new executive director of the Lawrence Campus for the college, and is also the director of community engagement. So, if you want to say a couple of words, Doctor, feel free to.
Yes, actually, my last name is Custodia, but that's okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, but that's okay. So, I'm here representing President Lane from Northern Essex Community College, but also to let you know that recently I became the executive director of the Lawrence Campus, and I'm also going to be involved in community engagement. And I know the city council have always been very supportive of the college, and I'm looking forward to work with you guys. Thank you.
Welcome. I am your city councilor, Sandy Almonte, and I will read this resolution into the record. Let it be known that we, the members of the Lawrence City Council, Lawrence, Massachusetts, whoop, let me take this out of this. By and throughout this resolution hereby applaud and recognize the academic achievement and accomplishment of Ismael Alvarez for being named the 2014 Northern Essex Community College graduate with distinction from Lawrence. Whereas, Ismael graduated from Greater Lawrence Vocational Technical High School in 2005 as a certified automotive mechanic. Whereas, Ismael has supported himself since the age of sixteen and worked as many as our, as four jobs to provide for his family. Whereas, understanding the importance of education, Ismael enrolled at the University of Massachusetts Lowell immediately after completing high school, but had to abandon his academic plans in order to meet his primaries, primary responsibility to his family. Whereas, with encouragement from his wife, Catrice, Ismael was able to pursue his academic goals some years later when he enrolled at Northern Essex Community College, which he describes as "coming home." Whereas, Ismael excelled while in attendance at Northern Essex Community College, sharing his expertise with the other students, and serving as a study group leader, tutor in engineering design, as a supplemental instruction in calculus, graduating with an associate degree in engineering sciences, attaining a 3.84 GPA, the highest GPA by a Lawrence resident. Whereas, Ismael is determined to continue on path of academic excellence by pursuing a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering at the University of Massachusetts Lowell this fall, and to later apply his skills and ability to the cutting edge of his field by combining his background in auto mechanics with his knowledge of auto mechan, mechanical engineering. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence City Council hereby applaud and honor the academic and personal achievement of Ismael Alvarez, and hereby set our hand and cause the seal of the city of Lawrence to be affixed to this, the twentieth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2014. Here signed, Council President Modesto Maldonado, Council Vice President Nilca Alvarez Rodriguez, myself, Sandy Elizabeth Almonte, Eileen I. Connell, Estela Reyes, Roger Toomey, Oneida Aquino, Mark LaPlante, and Kendris Vazquez. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. I really just want to say thank you to everyone again, but most importantly, my beautiful wife, Catrice Alvarez, which, this, I really can't understate how important it was for us to do this together, for people to do these things together. I really believe that together we can. Again, just thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again. I love you so much. For the record. Congratulations.
We're going to start with the public hearings. 3910. Thank you, Mr. LaPlante. We will now move to the public hearings.
Document number 89, 2014. Notice as hereby given the city council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, May 20, 2014, Council Chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed appropriation transfer funds as follows, from free cash, $26,779.37 to litigation. Account listed, and the transfer take effect upon approval. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this appropriation? If there is none, I would like to enter turn a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion from the, yes?
Mr. President, through you, I want to ask the Chair of the Budget and Finance, what this transfer is about and why it's necessary?
Sure. Through you, Mr. President.
Why he's looking for additional?
I think it's, I think it's important to note that at that moment, when, when these particular delegations were taking place, the, the city attorney's office was particularly understaffed, and as a result of it, we did have to obtain legal counsel from outside, which is something that we don't foresee for the, for the future, because now we're definitely increasing staff.
So, these services were contracted because there's been?
And also because of?
Does it continue to be understaffed?
Right now, I, I, in my personal opinion, I think it is. I think the city attorney's office is, continues to be understaffed. But we've, before, at this time, we only had one attorney, which was a city attorney, plus a secretary. But right now, from my understanding, there's the city attorney, the assistant city attorney, Mr. Kakuza, who came before the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting, and there's also another person who was working at the city attorney's office. So, there's, there's, has been additional people that have been hired that will bring expertise to ensure that in the future, we don't have to go to outside legal counsel. Another thing?
And now we, we have full-time, in addition to the city attorney being full-time, we have the additional full-time person in place?
That's correct. And another, another reason why we had to go to legal counsel was, outside legal counsel was because the city attorney was involved in this, in particular cases in which he was either going to testify, and he couldn't, it would have been a conflict for the city, for him to, to represent us at that moment.
So, he was some kind of witness or something?
That's correct.
Right. So, he had to, okay, people always ask me, you know, why we are consistently hiring outside help, so it's good to have, you know, the background?
Definitely.
As to why this is happening, and make it easier for me to explain. Thank you to the Budget and Finance Directors. Thank you.
Unless we have any other, any others, we'd like to take a vote on this.
Mr. President, just for clarification, the amount that we're voting on is the $24,000 amount, not $26,000.
Exactly, yes. It was mentioned that it was 26, Mr. Clerk, but it's 24,308. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, Document 12014.
Document 120, 2014. Notice as hereby given the city council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, May 20, 2014, in City Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, 7:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by or on behalf of National Grid and Verizon of New England, requesting the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through its city council members to grant permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, and to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, wires, for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as it may desire for distribution purposes along and across the public way, North Hampshire Street and Auburn Street, with the proximate locations as outlined on a plan submitted with the request and a petition as dated March 24, 2014, attached to the notice distributed to the butters provided by the assessor's office, and distributed by the city clerk's office at least seven days in advance.
Anyone in the audience who would like to address besides National Grid? If there is none, National Grid, please.
We're requ, Michelle Stacey, I'm a representative for National Grid, requesting permission to set a new pole and to relocate a pole on Hampshire Street for the project at Central Catholic.
Are there any questions for National Grid?
Just as a reminder, I note through you, Council President, that you were at an ordinance committee meeting?
Yes.
Just as a reminder, the old pole is no longer necessary. Are you going to be able to bring that down?
The one that we're relocating?
Right, so it's just a relocation?
We're going to move it, we're going to take out the old pole and move it to a new location.
Right, so there won't be any additional?
There shouldn't be. It should be in the jar request to remove the pole, but we also have to wait till telephone and cable, everyone's off the pole, before we can remove it.
Do you have to do any, any digging, or?
For the poles?
Right.
Yes. We do dig safes, and they put everything back, the cement, and they're supposed to fix it the way that it was before they put a shovel on the ground.
Yeah, we would appreciate that, that it doesn't have any cracks, and that they would put something, I guess, around it so that people won't prematurely step?
Yeah, I can request that, that there's no holes or uneven.
Right, because then, if not, it cracks.
Absolutely.
And that's some of the issues that my constituents have had.
Okay.
That, and I asked you about the poles again, because we have heard a lot, I don't think I'm the only councilor that heard, you know, complaints about there being too many poles and them not being knocked down.
Again, I'll bring it to Dave Gendel's office again. Every time I come here, I do go in and see him and?
They actually the same thing?
I do, I see.
That's why. And so, you'll be renting this pole to, to who?
It'll be a company-owned pole, telephone, and us own 50% of the poles. So, it's a due ownership.
So, it's due ownership? So, they're not paying you any rent for it, or?
No, once it's put in, if we set it, they pay us for half the pole, and if they set it, we pay them for half the pole.
So, since you're setting it, they'll be paying you for half the pole?
Exactly, yes.
Do you guys pay any rent to the City of Lawrence for being?
I don't, I don't believe so. I'm not 100% sure on that, but I don't think so.
I think, Mr. President, and Budget and Finance Chair, we might be able to look into seeing how much revenue, even if it's a little bit that we can get from?
We do?
Just a point of information through you, Council President. The poles are taxable, so we get a tax revenue in that sense? Because it's real property?
All right, so we do.
But I, I don't, a rent per se, but we do get tax revenue, so, yeah. And the more valuable the pole gets with extra rents from the third parties, the higher our tax goes because there's a higher valuation on it, so.
Thank you, Counselor Bernard, Burnell, sorry. Yeah, but that, that's, it's good to hear, it's good to hear, because, you know, that was a question that people have had for a long time, and this is the first time I hear a good answer to that. All right, thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Council President, for giving me the opportunity.
Any other questions? Mr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't necessarily have a question. I have more a complaint to this particular company. I know that we have been working for approximately, since I, pretty much since I was elected the first time, to try to work around the double to try to work around the double poles and start removing them and whatnot. We were provided with a list and a, a plan that, that was supposed to be very detailed and that everything was going to be done within a timeframe and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Nevertheless, I have given myself the homework that whenever something will happen in my district, I will drive around the district and see the double poles and what has happened with them. I gave it until today at noon time to see if anything will have happened. But I didn't want to tell any, anyone, because it was, you know, there was a plan. So I don't think that we need to be reminding anybody about what needs to be done, when it needs to be done, if we were promised at a given point that things will have been done. We're not here to tell people, you know, repeatedly, over and over. And at 12, unfortunately, the camera's not on, but I did want people to see it at home. I took four pictures of the four poles that are literally next to where we are looking to put this new pole on. And I will urge councillors to vote against this matter today. I would. I, I hope that we vote against it. You know why? Because we need to start sending clear messages to National Grid and to Verizon that we are not about playing games anymore. These are, no. Out of the four pictures, two of the poles have no wires at all. Two of them have no wires, meaning that they could have been removed. And the two that were removed, they were cut halfway, meaning that they're still there. And to me, that is not an acceptable job. And since it's not acceptable, I think we should vote no. And I'm not looking for an answer, honestly. My vote is, is already set and it won't change tonight. Even if you're promising, or whoever comes, comes in and promises something different, I will be voting no. Because we have been promised over and over again that it will be resolved. And I know that councillors that were here before me have been talking about this issue for many, many, many years. And I think it's the first time that we have an opportunity to say no. Even, look, and I understand, I think that this project will be great, but you know what? Even if it will be great, we need to sacrifice ourselves and say no for the first time, knowing that we have been repeatedly told it will be fixed. And it has not been fixed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Miss LaPlante and then Mrs. Bernard.
So, thank you, councillor. So, very quick. I'm not sure I'm going to be voting against it tonight, because there's probably a greater good here. And it's unfortunate, because the people, the very people who are, that are affected are the pawns in this, the people who probably need the service, the probably the people in that, in that area. And while I totally understand and relate completely with my colleague and the frustration that he feels, unfortunately, the, the law of unattended consequences takes over, whereby those people that nearby who need this aren't going to get it. And I, I just don't know if, if that's a fair enough trade-off. But I will challenge, once again, National Grid to do a much better job. My sense is that if this was happening in a neighboring community, if this was happening in some of our favorite communities like Andover, North Andover, Methune, anything that touches our city, the residents of those cities would be up in arms.
It is happening in all the cities.
I'm wondering it to what degree. But my sense is, my sense is that it's probably not at the same degree as it is here. And I could show you definitively throughout this, we are a very highly populated city, as you know. We have many, many, many more streets than those other two communities, the three communities. And because of that, we probably have many, many more poles than other communities. And because of that, we probably have many poles that are double poles. So, so you know all this. So my concern here is that because of who we are as a city, there is a term that we, that's a word of art called environmental justice, where certain organizations or companies will take advantage of a committee such as ours, where, where there is either low income, or there are issues regarding educational levels, et cetera, because you, companies feel that they can get away with doing more things in a community like Lawrence.
I'd like to say.
I'm almost done, and I'm going to let you have the floor, you can rebut. So my concern here is that those principles are being, are, are again, being manifested in our city here. And the frustration that this councillor feels and I feel, I mean, I see these poles all throughout my district, and I know it's annoying as heck, but you know, some of, many of the people in my district have much greater concerns. They're worried about going to work every day, finding a job, making sure their kids are going off to school, making sure that their streets are clean. There are many more concerns than they have than these poles. But because of the other concerns, these poles take a secondary importance. But it doesn't diminish the fact that it is important. And so I think that some businesses take advantage of that, because we have a plethora of different challenges that sometimes you can get away, not you personally, but companies can get away with these kinds of activities that may not be getting away with in other communities. And that's what is so offensive to me. So anyway, thank you.
I'd just like to say something that I don't think, I don't think that it's, you know, because it's Lawrence. We have the issue in every town meeting we go to, every town brings it up. Like you said, there's much more poles here than there is, say, in Andover, there's a lot of underground communities and things like that, but it's, I think it's a lot to do with our manpower. We don't have the crews that we used to have. It's not my department, the double poles, so I can't answer all the questions. I know Dave Gendel's group is in charge of that, but I do not think that it's because it's, you know, Lawrence, that the poles aren't being done. I think it's a company-wide issue from here to Rhode Island. It's not even a Massachusetts issue. It's, it's a big issue that we have.
Point of information, Mr. President. We were asked to provide a list of the top poles that we felt that had to be removed. And two out of 28 that I provided are here. And that was two years ago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I want to acknowledge the point that my fellow councillor, councillor Vasquez makes. It's an excellent point. And I've been with him on the ordinance committee when he made that initial plea to National Grid. We did it as its own item, was just the double poles. And promises were made that have not been fulfilled, and he's absolutely right. And it's frustrating. And we talk about frustration, I almost feel like retribution. And I say it with half a chuckle and half not a chuckle, because in the middle of all that, when we stopped, we didn't grant any National Grid permits for about a year. And at the end of that year, guess where the next double pole went up? Right in front of my house. And it's still sitting there, it's been sitting there for about a year now. So is that retribution? Maybe. I don't know. But I can't get it removed, been trying. I feel your pain, and now I see your pain every single day. So I am totally with you. I just want to keep in mind, this proposal, and I don't think everyone had this information, Central Catholic is doing a major construction and renovation project. And this, some of the pole reconstruction over there is to accommodate Central Catholic. They are on a construction schedule. It is a 10-week schedule that starts now, that they need to have done before August, when their kids come back for the fall camps, football starts, I think it's the second week of August. Track and all the other fall sports start that second week of August. I know councillor Maldonado got a call, I got a call from one of the admins at Central saying, could we waive the public hearing, because they really wanted to get this done two weeks ago? And we said, no, we're going to have the public hearing, that's not appropriate. We, we need to have the public hearing, so that's why we're here tonight. But the person that will be suffering if we vote no on this isn't National Grid. They'll just go on to the next project and, and work on the next site. The person that's going to suffer at this is going to be Central Catholic, because they do have a major construction and renovation project that is going on in the city, and it will be delayed. They are on a schedule. It is a 10-week construction schedule that does start now and does, and has to be done before those camps start in August. So I just wanted to keep that in mind. I think councillor Vasquez raises a very valid point, and I respect his vote however he votes tonight. But I would encourage my councillors to consider voting in favor of this, because at the end of the day, a no vote, while it may send a message to National Grid, they're not the one who gets hurt the most. The one who gets hurt the most is the actual applicant, which is Central Catholic.
Okay. Mr. Vasquez, did you mention that you, we have a list of double poles?
A list has been provided three times already.
Two times?
Three.
Do we have, do we have the latest list?
I'm not sure if Mr. McCabe has been the, the point person. We could definitely ask him, but.
Okay. If you can take charge of getting an up-to-date list, I think what we should do then is write a letter to National Grid, invite them to come in front of the city council, and ask them to provide us with a schedule on how they're going to address this problem. I think that we should do that. And put National Grid on notice that if they fail to comply, that we are not going to approve any further work in the city for National Grid. So after we take a motion on this item, I would like to enter turn a motion also to invite National Grid, once we have a list, a complete list, and provide them ahead of time with a list so that we can address.
Just a point of clarification, Council President. Are you saying a list, that National Grid is going to give us a list of what they're saying?
No, no, no. We're going, we probably asked, can ask DPW, Mr. Reyes Sensi, to provide us with a complete list in the city of double poles.
Okay. I don't know if he would have that, but okay. I just wish to, just unclear where the list would come from. If it was National Grid provide, because I know councillor Vasquez, they provided us with a list maybe two years ago. And he actually went and said, like, there's more. Like, I know you have three on Auburn Street, or whatever the street was, and I know of seven on that street. And they had zero on Mount Vernon Street, so then I went after he gave me the idea and counted five on Mount Vernon Street.
Well, I, I think that if we complete a list, an accurate list, and then we ask National Grid to come in front of this, of this body, and we ask them to provide us with a schedule on how they are going to address the problem, and put them on notice that we are not going to approve any other job unless they give us a schedule on how they're going to address the problem, if that is satisfactory. Councillor Reyes, and then councillor Montes.
Thank you. It is really hard to be in the middle, because I was with councillor Vasquez when we made that proposal and we provide the list. Fortunately, in my district, three pole has been removed, so I guess I have to, to be happy with that. And I received a phone call from the Central Catholic Administration Office last week looking for help, how we can help with this project. Which I believe at this point, what we can do, and I agree with councillor Bernard, you know, is not National Grid who's going to be paying, it's Central Catholic. I also want to, you know, just mention, if you can come out with a plan and come back in front of us and see if we need to help. Because even if I have to come out with another list, I have no problem.
I know that gave, Dave Gendel's group, is that who you spoke to, was Mr. Gendel?
It was a woman.
That's a completely different office than.
But who, who is the office that we need to call or contact?
Have you been in contact with Dave Gendel? I thought he had some kind of a project with you there.
We have, Mr. Ad McCabe from the administration has been working with him for at least three years.
Yeah, it's not my office.
A woman named Kathy Mower came and met with us.
That's Dave Gendel's office.
Yeah. And she made a lot of promises.
A lot of promises.
Okay. I can, you know, bring it to her tomorrow morning and have her call you and.
That would be great.
Please, please do so.
I, I, again, I think we have a chance now to put National Grid on notice.
Yeah, and we have, have them come to the next meeting.
Oh, yes, but we have to kind of reinforce what we are saying here, because that had been said how long ago? You know, when nothing has been happening. In my district, okay, yes, three, but three out of how many?
I don't know.
No, no, I know that you don't know. I know that you don't know, but we need to come out with a plan.
I will bring it to their office in the morning and I'll make sure.
What is that? So, yeah, so I just, you know, that's all I can say. For this time, I'm going to say yes, but if you come in front of me again with the same issue, with the same situation, unfortunately, I have to say no.
Okay, thank you. I would like to enter turn a motion then, to approve this document.
There's someone here from Central Catholic that would like to speak.
Yes. Why don't you come forward? Identify yourself, please.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Welsh. I'm the director of building and grounds of Central Catholic High School. And I'd just like to, I'd like to, first of all, respectfully, in appreciation of councillor Vasquez's comments, ask that the vote that's taken tonight not reflect negatively on Central Catholic's attempt to try and improve the neighborhood at, at Auburn Street and Hampshire Street. The reason that these poles are going in is simply to reroute the three-phase service, which right now doesn't exist on Auburn Street, to be able to feed the school. So that the existing electric service, three-phase service, which is going to be under the new football field, you know, won't be under the football field, but will be on poles. So that's the purpose of, of this. Secondly, I'd like to ask that if there is a 30-day stay on the approval, I'd like to ask that that be waived in the interest of trying to expedite our schedule to complete the installation of the field before the start of school. It's a tight construction schedule, and, and I, I ask your support for our efforts at Auburn and Hampshire Street. Thank you very much.
Again, I would like to enter a motion to.
Council President, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed pole and waive the 30 days.
Mr. President, there was a person for the public hearing.
Hold on, hold on. Let me see whether there is a second. Is there a second to the motion? There's a second to the motion, public? Go ahead.
We have gone through this, Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street, we've heard this song and dance from National Grid. We're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. They are not addressing the issue that there are two and three and maybe four different utilities that are on these poles. They can say they're going to do everything, we're going to move them. But if Comcast or Verizon or various cell phone companies that have their equipment on the pole, they don't get out there to do it. National Grid can't do anything until those people. So I think that the permits for let them, National Grid to do something, should be predicated on the fact that once they come back with a confirmed date from the other utility companies that share that pole, the permit not be allowed. Thank you.
Council President, I know you said you had another motion to send correspondence to National Grid. After this motion is dealt with, I just want to throw something out for the body that I think might help all of us and maybe give National Grid some incentive. I would like, as a body, that we send correspondence to the tax assessor, Alexi Vega, and ask him, may we double tax where there are double poles? Because if we're getting twice the revenue, that may give them twice the incentive to get the poles down twice as fast. So I just want to throw that out as an option. After this motion's been heard, a new motion to ask correspondence be sent to the, because we should be double taxing. If there's two poles, it should be taxed as a separate entity, and it should be taxed in full until the pole comes down. And the burden should be on them to show us that the poles come down. So I think maybe to make sure that we're doing that would create some incentive, and it might help alleviate the problem and make things go faster for all of us.
It was mentioned that there are other companies who use those poles. And definitely, we should invite them to Verizon, Comcast, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe we should invite them at the same time to come in front of this body to discuss the issue.
Council President, may I?
And put them on check.
May I just add one thing to that? One of the, whoever owns the pole should have the responsibility of notifying the other carriers, and that's what happens. They notify, be it our own fire department, or be it Comcast, or whomever it is, that they're going to take the pole down, and then within 30 days, they're supposed to take their piece off, and then they notify the next party, almost like a domino effect. But to have the burden go back to National Grid and to say, or whoever owns the pole, be it Verizon, whoever owns that particular utility pole, that the pole owner, because that's what's happening. There's no sense of responsibility, the second person isn't notifying the third person. So that, like a telephone game, it's getting lost in the chain of command. To say that in Lawrence, the pole owner has to be the one to give notice, or that pole owner continues to pay the tax.
Yes, Council President, well, if they have two poles.
They should pay two taxes.
Don't they have to continue to pay?
Well, they're counting it as one, because they're using the same pole number, till this one comes down.
Oh, because it has the same pole number.
But if we put two pole numbers and double tax.
Then we should be doing that. I mean, I guess we should not be, you know, using the same pole number, but giving another pole number. And I also think that when they have these little stubs right there.
Tax it.
Tax that too.
No.
Yeah, seriously. Because they won't, they won't do it properly unless we do so. But I just have another question for the National Grid person. Why is the old pole not suitable for doing what Central Catholic needs?
It could be damaged, it might not be the size they need, it might not be thick enough for what they need. A three-phase bank service is really big. You need a really big pole. for what they need, a three-phase bank service is really big, you need a really big poll. So I don't know what the old poll size was, so I'm assuming it's because they need a much thicker, larger poll.
Right, because I was curious, I said, because they're not that far apart, you know, so I didn't understand why the old poll couldn't be used to do that work.
They, they're moving one poll, I believe, so the primaries don't go over the roof, so they're going to move one poll, and the exchange of the other poll is, it could have been damaged, just old, sometimes they just rot at the bottom, it's a whole bunch of...
And are you going to do this immediately, take that old poll down? Are you going to do it at the same time that you put...
When they create a job, they do create a job to install and remove, but then it comes to if there's other things on the polls, cable, there's telephone, so it will be in the job to be removed. When it's removed, I don't, I don't know, because it depends on what's on the poll.
Right. Okay, then getting back to our discussion, I'd be curious to know how much is the taxing, because some people would rather just pay the...
I think, I think that's something that we can discuss later, because we have too many issues at hand, but definitely...
But I'm just saying that some people would pay a fee, and if it's not that high, they don't care, they'll continue to behave in the same way.
Well, again, I, I think that what we should do is put National Grid and the other companies on notice, that we are not going to approve any further jobs unless they give us a schedule on how they're going to address the problem, so...
And then lastly, Mr. President, I just wanted to say that people are probably saying, well, why are they spending so much time talking about polls? Well, one of the, one is the frustration for people, especially those in the community who have to look at it, like Council Bernard has to look at that. And the second part is that we're working on improving and moving the city forward, and that also entails improving the aesthetics of the city, and these polls don't help. It's not like they're beautiful or nicely, you know, designed, it's just there.
Yeah, I understand, I do. And it's just the system, the system needs to be improved, and, like I said, it's not my department, I'll bring it to them, and I'm going to have them contact you us, because they're going to have to be face to face with you to solve.
And we're going to send a letter too, like, Council President, just to back it up, but it'd be nice if you give it the personal touch...
Absolutely.
And ask this person to come, and I also think they're not the only utility that does this, because as you said, one company could put up the poll, or another company could put up the poll, and you have to talk to one another. But you talk to one another when you put it up, you know, but when it gets the changes, exactly as Council Bernard spoke, in the past, we had the same situation. I was on the council for 10 years before I came back now, and we had that same discussion every year. So I'm, I'm very much in solidarity with Council Vasquez on this.
Gentlemen, I'm going to stop the discussion, further discussion, thank you in the public, but I'm going to take this for a vote, and then I'm going to enter turn a motion to request National Grid, Verizon, and Comcast to come in front of us, once we have a complete list. Okay? So let's take a vote on this matter. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Council Vasquez.
No.
Council LaPlante.
Yes.
Council Toomey.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Almonte.
Yes.
Council Aquino.
Yes.
Council Bernard.
Yes.
Council Vice President.
Yes.
And Council President. Yes, the ayes have it. Anybody would like to make a motion that we invite National Grid?
So moved.
Verizon?
Second.
And Comcast, to provide us with a schedule on how they're going to address, once we give them the list.
And I would like to, to add to that motion, Council Aquino.
Almonte.
Oh, Almonte, you said so moved, okay. It's hard to hear, like...
I know.
I'm aging, I'm aging, but I would like to add that any additional utility companies that we may not have mentioned that also holds responsibility for polls, okay? Because I don't know if AT&amp;T has any polls, but...
Or MetroPCS or whatever it is.
Metro, yeah.
I'll accept the...
The amendment, okay. Any discussion?
Discussion. We're inviting them to come to the full council, Council President?
Yes.
The next full council meeting?
Not necessarily, I think it will depend on, on how soon we can have the list.
We should also invite...
Do you think that might be better, I hate to put this on the ordinance committee, you think that might be a good place for them to flush it out?
Then it's going to take longer.
I think it might, it's probably better to ask them to provide us with a schedule at the full city council and put them on notice that we're not going to approve anything.
Right. Could we ask, could we ask that we have that for our June 3 meeting, just to give them a little bit of a push on that, so that way, I mean, if they have time to want to come out and do this project, and they know that, you know, that we're serious about this, and that we really want to rectify the situation, so I think that giving them a date of June 3 will put a little bit of gas under their rear end as to getting it done, and then we can hold their, their legs to the fire if they don't get it to us by then, then we can start in the process of negating any, anything that they want done from us.
Okay, if we can, if we can tentatively get a list, by all means, so let's put them on the, on the, for the next agenda, and see whether we will have a complete list by that, by then, okay?
Thank you.
Council President, I also think that we should look into who are these companies accountable to. If they're not afraid of us, there might be some company that they're, which one is...
They would probably report to, like, the telecom, the...
Telecom or something, and maybe we could get a rep from there to help with this push.
Yes, definitely.
Council President, may I make a recommendation, sir? As you know, any, any item that's brought before the city council must be sent to a committee unless it's a resolution of some sort. Unless we're calling this a resolution, my recommendation is that we place as a new item for tonight's meeting, if that's all right, it's an emergency, and you can refer it to the ordinance committee, then it'll be the referral, send it right back to the full council in time for your June, whatever, second meeting.
Third.
Third, whatever it is.
Sure, okay. Okay, remember that this is going to be referred to the ordinance committee, and then back, so that we can meet on the, on this matter on the...
Can we have a, which is the item number?
Document 197.
197.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Council President?
You mentioned about taxing.
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion on there?
I would, yeah. I don't know if it would be part of that same document, number 197.
Yes.
I wanted to send correspondence to Alexi Vega, the assessor, just inquiring if we would have the ability to double tax where there's a double poll, and if you could also, in that, clarify the amount of what they pay for taxes currently on those polls.
You're making that as a formal motion.
Make that a formal motion.
Second?
Motion has been made and properly second, any comments, discussion?
Yes.
Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, thank you. Okay, let's move forward. It has already been approved, so there's nothing else that you, that you need to, okay?
You're all set, but you could stay and watch.
Document 12314.
Document 123, 2014. Notice this hereby, given City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 20th in Council Chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed appropriation, transfer of funds as follows, from free cash, $185,000 to city street and sidewalks cleanup. Special purposes stabilization fund, $185,000, said transfer to take effect upon approval. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published may...
Anyone in the public who would like to address this, speak on behalf of, or behalf or against this document, 12314. Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, do you have any details as to how this money's going to be used?
Yes, through you, Mr. President. In our last council meeting, when I made a request to order the public hearing, I did suggest a change from 185, from $185,000 to $195,000.
195?
Yeah, to 195.
Okay.
And it was noted in the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting that we had a discussion about this, and we wanted to make sure that we implemented an educational component to the, to the cleaning of the streets and whatnot. So just to be able to answer your question, what the mayor is looking to do with this money is to temporarily hire laborers that will be working for, 25 people that will be working for a period of 12 weeks throughout the summer months, and it will be for 40 hours a day, I mean, 40 hours a week, I'm sorry, 15 hours, $15 an hour. So 25 laborers, 12 weeks, 40 hours weekly, $15 an hour. So if you calculate the amount of workers, it will add up to $180,000, plus $5,000 for supplies that will be needed, and we had suggested an extra $10,000 to add education to it, because we felt that it wasn't necessarily helpful to be cleaning the streets while not educating the community about the importance of keeping our streets clean after the work was done.
Is there going to be any overtime required from DPW employees to pick up the garbage, whatever, whatever is piled up by these employees?
Mr., Council LaPlante actually brought up a good point in regards to this matter. I don't know if you necessarily recall the, the healthy conversation we had, do you want to...
Sure, so, yeah, I think the question you had was regarding the tipping fees, and that, well, if we're really, really effective on this, we're going to really gather a lot of trash, we gather a lot of trash, and we've got to pick it up, and then we've got to put it somewhere, and that adds additional cost to it. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, either inside the 180 that we have here, or inside their current budget, or the budgets proposed for FY 2015, that they're going to be able to deal with the question that you asked, do we have the, do we have the budget to fund the, the end cleanup and the tipping fees? And the answer that I received during that was yes.
Okay.
I know the DPW director's here, and if I'm misspeaking, he will correct me. I guess I misspoke, so here he comes.
John Isensi, DPW Director, City of Lawrence, 1 Nicky Street. The proposal is Hawkins back to the days of 30 and 40 years ago, where the temporary 90-day employee was a prominent factor in the department. It makes good sense financially to get these boots on the street, you don't pick up the cost of a full-time employee, there are no additional costs as far as sick days, vacation, et cetera, et cetera, and a lot of this work that we are proposing would happen during the better weather time, such as we have now. We do anticipate picking up quite a bit of basic curb and sidewalk and street debris that does accumulate quite a bit of an expense for disposal. We do have a, a second and third shift, one-man crew on each shift, that should debris be left out beyond the normal seven to three hours, those folks that go by and gather that material up so it doesn't linger in an area for an extended period of time, and we do have a quite extensive outreach program, a face-to-face, if you will, to the residents as we go up and down your street, to educate them, and we find a lot of times, folks just aren't aware of how to get rid of a mattress properly, or the proper way to get rid of a TV, or, you know, where do they put the stuff they sweep up in their own gutter? You know, is it appropriate to put in the trash barrel? If they have some, a bureau they may want to get rid of, they don't understand how to get rid of it. So that group of folks who are out there doing the street by, door by door, if you will, a cleanup, will be knocking on doors and interacting with the residents to educate them on those, on those issues. And it's a huge part of the recycling program that we're trying to get going in earnest. We have made some headway in recycling, we were at, before we started with Harvey, we're at 6%, we're somewhere around 11% now. So there is some headway being made, outreach is a huge component for that. And so as long, as we, as we go about cleaning, we'll also be reaching out to the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Isensi. I just want to make sure that, that we don't have garbage accumulated and not picked up on a timely basis. I know that during Earth Day, there were garbage that remained there for almost a week, when people worked and accumulated that garbage in certain sectors of the city. So I want to make sure that, that there is a coordination with the group and that the garbage is collected as soon as it's piled up, so that...
Yeah, the Earth Day presented some unique issues. It was an unprecedented amount of folks that came out there, and they were so scattered, it, it does take a little while to pick up, the amount of tonnage they did pick up, and I believe it was a, a record amount of cleanup this time. Substantial amount of debris was removed, and I may add, it was disposed of it at Covata at no cost.
Wow.
So, you know, that's a very big, big plus.
Thank you, thank you.
Council President, through you, I'd like to ask the director, you're going to be dividing these people into crews, is that...
I believe we will, and we're going to try to cull out a, a handful, if you will, of some of the more astute bilingual individuals to, to interact with the residents, and, and some will be more of a basic labor force, basically those two groups, you know, an education portion and then a, a labor type force.
I think this is an excellent idea, the education part of it, and I also like the, the thought that there will be at least one bilingual person in the group, you know, to assist with anyone who may be monolingual, and I guess my question, my follow-up question is, are you going to be making up any instructional materials?
We do, we do have some packets available that, Mr. Brea, the recycling coordinator, has a sample that a package will be delivering.
So it could show, it could demonstrate, you know, that you need to call when it's a TV, that you, you know, that kind of, everything that you're going to try to educate the public.
Everything is in this package, it's, you know, how to, how to stay clean and neat, a, a recycling sticker that you would put on, how your trash barrel should look, the, the list of the operation, the pricing is in here, it's fairly extensive.
So it's a very nice campaign, it's nice material. I see that, that you have it in color too, some of it, and, and literature could also be costly.
Well, just as a, just as a kind of a side piece of information, we spend almost half of the DPW budget on, on trash removal, it's about $3.6 million.
Right.
That's a substantial bite out of our budget, and it hampers our ability to do additional things in the parks and in the streets, because trash is so important to get picked up, and, and we have, that's a number one priority.
And this is good, because people don't like lengthy stuff, and does it add here, like I see they don't have, you need to call this number for electronics or to pick up...
Yeah, if the à la carte menu is not in there, and it should be, it basically would tell you, you know, a mattress is free, a couch is 20 bucks, a, you know, a bicycle is X amount, and that has the 800 number on there as well.
And the white trash, right?
White goods, yeah.
The, no, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean...
We call much worse now, not a problem.
Did I get in trouble here? No. I meant the, the refrigerator...
Yeah, white goods.
Washing machines.
Sure.
White goods, thank you. I do apologize if anyone was offended, I was laughing.
On behalf of all the white trash, we accept your apology.
Oh, my God, remember, English is my second language, so you need to forgive me. So what was I saying? Oh, yeah. Director, will, will this play any role with, I know that I had a brief and hurried discussion with Mayor Rivera regarding youth employment, would this program allow, you know, for some placement of youth, or...
I, I'm not sure that'd be the mayor's decision on that, but, you know, he has indicated he's looking to get adults, you know, more, there's an awful lot of adults out there that are trying to support families that are unemployed right now, and I, I think he's gearing a little bit towards that. We have 14% unemployment rate here in the city, many of those folks have young families.
And in the past, when, when I had been working with some grant dollars, I had tried to get young people involved, and then union, you, you weren't in charge at that time, there was someone else, and I was told that the union was opposed to bringing in, are you going to have any of those problems with this program?
Yeah, no, what happened is that when, when the labor force have a clause in their contract, if any one of that labor force is on a layoff status, then they're not, the city's not allowed to take in any additional help until their union members are brought back. to take in any additional help until their union members are brought back. That's been satisfied for quite a while now. They really don't have any objection to this at all.
So we will be able to, I heard that you, correct me if I'm wrong, that you lost some workers. You may be able to give them some temporary relief, because this is only temporary.
Yeah, these are the basic ninety-day appointments. We've had ninety-day appointments in the past, and then, and, and what used to happen many years ago is they'd give you ninety days and you'd have a bunch of guys over ninety days, and, and some folks honestly would stand out as very fine employees. You know, you find a diamond every now and then, you pick up a few rocks, but every once in a while you find a diamond. And that's generally how a lot of folks end up here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your information.
I would like to enter a motion to approve document one twenty-three fourteen.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I still have something else, I have questions. Are you gonna?
No, she, yeah.
Okay. I'm so sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. We hired twenty-five people, temporary people, to make changes where we used to have a organization called Hands United for Lawrence. Like, they used to clean up the lots for free. And I'm happy to hear that the union have no problem with this hiring. I know for sure there's a lot of people that want to help out in Lawrence. I don't see, I wanna say that I don't see that this problem is gonna be resolved for three months. And twenty-five people, I think we should, are you agreeing with this project or it was a project presented to you?
I'm always happy to get the city cleaner than, than it is now, and I'm very happy to have some people do some outreach in recycling, just because recycling is more than a one-man job when you're trying to reach eighty thousand residents. And basically recycling education is, it's almost one-on-one.
Yeah. At what time are they planning to go and knock on people's door to, at what time are they planning to go and knock on people's door?
Well, you know, their hours haven't been set yet. The DPW works seven to three. I think that if they work seven to three, we could certainly work around that. You catch people coming out, going to work, they have their trash out, they may have boxes hanging out, their barrel may be snowconed. You wanna try to reach those people and educate them that, you know, first of all, that snowconed barrel is not, it's a finable offense. And if they don't have a recycle bucket out, you might wanna say that, you know, some of that trash could fit into recycling.
If you want, if you guys wanna be more affected on this, you guys have to have at least two different times, 'cause I'm not home till six. Unless you come home at six-thirty, I'm not gonna open the door, 'cause I'm not there. And that's not only applies to me, applies to a lot of people that are working. When they get out of work, they wanna be home. If you wanna reach them, reach them after work. Not everybody in Lawrence work till three. We had a layoff of thirty-three people on DPW. Are, are they gonna be able to apply for that job and get three months?
I would assume, yeah, I don't think anyone's been restricted from applying from anything.
Have they been contacted, maybe because they were laid off and we are paying for unemployment?
Well, this, this is a proposal, we can't really contact people and say, we're gonna give you a job when we really don't have it to give yet.
All right, all right, okay. Do you guys have plans to contact them if it's approved?
I, I believe the Personnel Department will be handling all the hiring, so I'm, I'm sure if folks were laid off, they'd be cognizant of that and would like to reach out to them.
Yeah, 'cause I'd rather see somebody permanent in a job that is gonna be constantly doing it and not three months with little results. And I will not be voting in favor of this tonight.
Councilor Montes?
Thank you, Council President. I, yeah, I was, I was gonna keep my comments to myself, but it's just a, a matter of, and it's a good valid point that Councilor Aquino brings up. When we had United Hands for Lawrence, it was, it was a couple hundred people that used to come out on Saturdays to clean, and that was a huge undertaking for two hundred people, a hundred people. How are we gonna divide twenty-five people among this huge city for, for the twelve weeks? It's gonna be such a huge undertaking. It's like saying, you know, how are we gonna divide them among the city? Like, are we gonna do, we have six, yeah, we, it, it's a huge city. And twenty-five people is not ever gonna be enough to even start to get the city cleaned in a twelve-week period. Even if they put those twenty-five people in my district, which isn't even like a business district as Oneda's district where there would be a lot more trash, there's no way that in twelve weeks District A would be cleaned with twenty-five people. So I know for a fact that there is no way that we're gonna be able to get our city cleaned with twenty-five people in twelve weeks. And who's gonna supervise these people? How, how are these groups gonna be divided and who is gonna be the captains to supervise to make sure that they are doing this? They're going to be out there picking up and cleaning. Are we gonna be liable if they get stuck, cut? What are, what are, what are we going to be liable for if anyone gets hurt on a ninety day and then we end up with a liability suit because someone got hurt trying to clean our city? Twenty-five people, twelve weeks, it's not gonna make, it, it could, it could make a small impact where we're gonna spend money on getting people information to, you know, recycle, and if we see like a snowconed trash receptacle that we could go to that house. Other efforts need to be made on a wider basis across the city. I know that during springtime and summertime is a better time to do it 'cause everyone comes outside, but twenty-five people is not gonna make a difference to clean the city in twelve weeks, 'cause like I said, it's a huge, huge undertaking, a huge undertaking. And the, the other small piece that I kinda wanted to see, and I understand that there are families who, and our unemployment rate is low, but we also have our youth who are family members because they have children of their own, and they would like to be able to be part of these. And then, as Councilor Aquino was saying, we have people who, who are receiving unemployment at the moment, that if they do qualify to be part of this, then their unemployment gets canceled, and then they are gonna have to reapply all over for, and get into the process, which may, they may be denied then after that, just because they're trying to make a little extra cash for their families. I understand the purpose of it, but twenty-five people, I don't think would make an impact to clean our city. Thank you.
One last comment, Council Bernard?
Thanks, Council President. I just wanna say, I think the project has a lot of potential, and I just wanna, think, think about real numbers. When people look at real numbers, if you have fifty volunteers go out and clean an alley, like Kansas United Florence did, and they did an awesome job, they get a lot done in one Saturday, fifty people. So think about this, you have twenty-five people, instead of just one Saturday, utilizing five business days. So instead of fifty people, twenty-five on Monday, twenty-five on Tuesday, twenty-five on Wednesday, twenty-five on Thursday, twenty-five on Friday. So over the course of the week, a hun, the effect of a hundred and twenty-five people have been doing the work. So I do think you make substantial progress, plus it's five days a week. Think about this too, when there's a really littered area, people tend to litter more. After Earth Day, I noticed how many people, when the city was so clean, did not litter again because the city was so clean.
They respected.
It was really interesting to watch that. Plus, garbage cans were just emptied, so they were nice, it was easy. I think if the garbage cans are emptied, if the city's looking better, people are gonna be less inclined to litter because they're gonna see that trend being set. Is it ideal solution or the perfect solution? No, but we're, someone in this room often says, don't look, you know, Miss Good trying to get to perfect. It's a very good solution, it's gonna help the city get cleaner, I do think it's worth supporting. And I do think if you look at real numbers, if it's twenty-five people, yes, but it's twenty-five people five days a week, so that's the effect of a hundred and twenty-five people on a Saturday, it's the same impact. I do think it's gonna make substantial progress. One of the comments made about unemployment, that, that's not how unemployment works. They don't penalize you for taking part-time work. And if you do take the work, you can reapply, but you, if you were making more money getting employed through this ninety-day program, it's to your benefit. When you go back for unemployment, you actually would go at the higher rate because you took some other employment in between. So I don't think this would hurt anyone coming off of unemployment. I, I think it's a good program, I do support it. Is it perfect? No. Will it help the city? Yes, definitely will make for a cleaner city this summer.
Thank you. Who made the motion? I'm, I'm going to cut discussion, so. Who made the motion to approve the document before?
Cross talk, I didn't.
Yes, okay, then let me enter turn the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor?
Second.
It has been properly second.
Do we need to waive the thirty days?
Oh, the amount, again, is one ninety-five instead of one eighty-five, okay?
One ninety-five.
A hundred and ninety-five thousand. A motion has been made and it has been properly second, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Roll call?
Thirty days were waived. The thirty days were waived?
Waived, yeah. Waiving the thirty days, waived the thirty days.
Vote?
See?
Excuse me.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council Bernard?
Yes.
Council Aquino?
No.
Council Monte?
No.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Council Bassett?
Yes.
Yes. The ayes have it? The last public hearing, document one thirty-two fourteen.
Document one thirty-two, two thousand and fourteen, notice is here by giving the City Council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty, two thousand and fourteen, in Council chambers, two under Common Street at seven PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to revise ordinances to be amended by adding a new chapter to the municipal code, chapter five point eight oh, regarding fingerprint-based background checks for certain licenses and applicants for those licenses to be placed in numerical order. The ord, the ordinance is authorized by General Law, Chapter six, one seventy-two B and a half, requiring all who wish to obtain licenses to engage in the following occupational activities: manager for alcoholic beverages, hawkers and peddlers, transient vendors, solicitors and door-to-door salespersons, owners or operators of public conveniences, taxis and livery service, dealers and secondhand articles and old gold, and ice cream truck vendors. Requiring them to submit to a full set of fingerprints to be taken by the Lawrence Police Department within ten days from the date of application to be used in conducting state, national, and criminal record background checks in accord with the provisions of the ordinances, all applicable laws, regulations, and city policies. The fee charged by the police department for the purpose of conducting fingerprint-based criminal background checks shall be one hundred dollars, with a portion of the fee being deposited to the firearms fingerprint identity verification fund. As specified in General Law, Chapter six, section one seventy-two B and a half, and the remainder of the fee may be retained by the City of Lawrence for the costs associated with administration of this system. Purpose of this hearing further is to gather testimony, information, and input concerning the policy for fingerprinting, civil fingerprinting for municipal licensed applicants by the City of Lawrence, mass for the purpose of conducting state and national background checks and screening those applicants as referenced in those municipal license reference in this notice. Policy has been promulgated by the adoption of twenty-eight court federal regulation, section twenty point thirty-three eight three, Public Law ninety-two fifty-four, and General Law, Chapter six, one seventy-two B and a half. The purpose of Chapter five eight oh of the municipal code, said fingerprinting, civil fingerprinting process for municipal licenses and their applicants is also subjected to the Massachusetts Department of Criminal Justice Information Services Policies and Procedures. Said policy, if approved, shall be in conjunction with the approval of Chapter five point eight oh, as stated herein. Now, unabridged copy of the proposed ordinance, the policy, together with supporting documentation, were made available to the public for examination, viewing, and copying, copying at the Office of City Clerk between the hours of eight-thirty AM during business hours, and was also posted on the city website. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. This matter was published on May eighth, previously approved by the council pending this public hearing.
Anybody in the public that would like to speak to this matter? Please identify yourself.
Good evening, Humayun Malik, fifty-three Chester Street. We as a citizen demand of you, of this council, to support this proposal ordinance by the leadership of our police department. You as our elected official demand support of police department in three separate ways: support our police officers and the Senior Officers Union, support the budget and the financial need, also issue, issues like the ordinance that we asked tonight in order to fingerprint for the truck or vendors. It is important since these vendors are in direct contact primarily with the youngest citizen of our city. Also, in a neighboring city such as North Andover, they have these policies and procedure that is supported by Massachusetts General Law to get fingerprint as a civil consent in order to verify their background, so when they come into contact with our citizen, especially our children, they have no background that is against public policy. So we as a citizen request of this council to support such an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
Good evening again, still Dick Russell, still live at thirty-four Cross Street. I was at the licensing board hearing the other night when this issue was brought up for discussion, and I threw a question out, and Lieutenant Conway just kinda rocked back. Is this, is this proposed ordinance gonna affect religious solicitation? Jehovah's Witnesses, not to be discriminatory or pick on anybody, but is this gonna stop them from soliciting without one of these required IDs?
I believe that this only applies to vendors.
They're vending God, aren't they?
Point of information?
Yes.
Right now, certain door-to-door vendors that are for-profit selling like Verizon, they have to register with the police department, get a license. So instead of just registering with the police department and getting a license, now there are employees that are gonna be soliciting door-to-door in the city who have to actually get fingerprinted. There's a change to the state law that made it much stricter for transient vendors, ice cream trucks, a lot of different licensing establishments, even bars, they're gonna have to change, probably gonna wind up needing to get another fingerprinting machine, that's gonna be the next big expense out of this whole thing.
Well, the discussion that went on, it stated that it is gonna be a time-consuming process for the Lawrence Police Department to initiate this. Larger corporations, as you mentioned, the, the utility companies, whatever, they have the capability of bringing their own people and hiring fingerprint expert to basically do the whole thing, present the cards to the police department, they can run the stuff through the, scan the fingerprints in, match the fingerprints up with the name. I know with some of the smaller things, ice cream trucks, yes, they're gonna have to go down to the police station. Taxi cabs, there's enough taxi?
I just wanted to answer your specific question regarding the Jehovah Witnesses or people, if you're religious soliciting door-to-door, you don't need to register with the police department currently, so I wouldn't think they would need to, this impact, this ordinance wouldn't impact them.
Okay, all right, that, that answers that question. Okay, but the, the case of the, we'll say the taxi cab companies, we have what, a hundred and fifty cabs in the city, we have what, upwards of what, four or five hundred licensed cab drivers? Let them go out and bring in their own fingerprint people and do the fingerprinting. I mean, you're gonna be running it through, like I said, through the computer, you're gonna get a set of fingerprints, they're gonna be scanned in, and you're gonna pop up with a name. Does a name on the fingerprint card match up with the name that's in the computer system with the other fingerprints or not match up? That's one thing. Now, there's one thing that I did not see in this thing at all, there's no penalty. What if I go, what if I start running around selling dog leashes without a permit? What's the penalty, you know, what, there's no penalty, there's, there's no teeth in the, in the, in the law.
Well, through you, Council President, may I? The, the penalty is, it's required to obtain a license, so the licensing authority?
So I'm in violation of not getting a license, what's the penalty?
Revoke your license.
What's the penalty?
So be it, if you have a nightclub, we revoke your nightclub license. If you are a cab driver, we would be revoking your medallion. If you are a ice cream truck driver, we would be revoking your ice cream truck license. So that, that's.
Okay, but in the case of me, if I'm a door-to, as I, you know, as I said, a, a solicitor, a door-to-door salesperson.
We would look at the licensing statute.
So what if I, what if I say, sayonara to the licensing thing, you know, you're affecting free trade, you know? I don't see a penalty here for, you know, there's no slap on the wrist for me.
Well.
I think that that, there should be a penalty physically stated in the ordinance.
The point of this ordinance is to allow the police department to require them to get fingerprints, so that they can then bring it as part of licensing procedure. If it's part of the licensing procedure, we wanna have a penalty for somebody that's not in compliance, that's appropriate, but this specific ordinance is, is required by the Attorney General that we authorize the police department to enter into a more formal method of fingerprinting.
Yeah.
So that that can be writ- So that that can be retained and be recognized through the code of, through the chain of evidence, should something come up with one of these people.
Quite frankly, I think that somebody from the police department should have been invited to comment on this.
They were. They were at the subcommittee level extensively. They gave us the, they put the item on the agenda.
Yeah.
They, I mean, they were not uninvited. They are very well aware of the meeting tonight. I was surprised that there's not an officer here tonight.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I hit Lieutenant Conway at the Licensing Board meeting the other night. He, he just kind of rocked back. He's, we never gave any of that stuff any thought. You know, so I mean, there are some issues that should be resolved before this is, you know, voted in as an ordinance. You know it as well as I could. There's what, one, two, three? You three lawyers up there know a good lawyer could beat this ordinance to pieces.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Russell.
Okay, thank you.
What I would like to do is take, take notice, and we can look later into whether there are any penalties created by the state.
Sure, just to clarify for the fellow councils that might be, you know, raising new questions. This is a state-mandated ordinance. It was put forth by the Attorney General's office. It's not something that we came up with on our own. The process for licenses to be, the process for local police departments to issue fingerprints for licenses has changed, and it's state-mandated now. And it's basically, we have to adopt an A G-approved ordinance to allow the police department to comply with that. So really, this is a procedural step to allow the police department to comply with Attorney General regulations. If we want to look at other penalties, at the licensing phase, that may be appropriate. But right now, tonight's mission is to adopt an A G-approved license that will allow our police department to do the fingerprinting so people can get their licenses, be it for ice cream trucks, which is actually the seasonal thing that made this so timely, or other licenses in the city.
Thank you.
Council President, I'd like to offer a motion-
Yes, go ahead.
That we approve this document. I understand there are a lot of vendors waiting.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that's my motion, and that we waive any thirty days.
Motion on the floor to approve Document one thirty-two fourteen and waive the thirty days. It has been properly second.
Discussion.
Brief, brief, please.
Brief discussion, Council President.
Uh, Council Tumi first, and then-
My, my question is more of a question of understanding. If once a person has gone through this process, that's the only time he has to go through it. Is that correct?
Say again, no.
Once a person goes through this process of being fingerprinted, he doesn't have to go through this every year, every time he goes for a license.
I think it is annual.
Why would he have to be?
It would depend on the license, the license, if it's an annual license, they'd have to go through the same process annually. If it's a license that lasts two years, three years, that's the term.
A person can commit a crime during the period of the license.
I understand that, but his fingerprints are recorded.
Yes.
So they just do the-
So why should he have to go through it again if he's going through it?
I think that the purpose of the finger- Isn't the purpose of fingerprint is so they can request information as to whether the standing of that individual?
My understanding was that they needed to get the fingerprints on file in a way that was appropriate, that it would be preserved in a chain of evidence should there be a question about that individual, that the police department could rely on those fingerprints at a later date and have them be deemed valid. What we're doing now is a little too informal, and so that they were not holding up in court through a chain of evidence issue, so that this procedure is more formalized.
I understand that, but it's, once it's recorded, the fingerprints don't change from year to year, or from three years to three years.
The Attorney General-approved version of the statute that we're adopting is what was expressed earlier, that it's in conjunction with your license. So if it's a one-year license, which most of our licenses are, it is required to get done annually. If they could come up with a way that, we don't have to do that, I would be happy to modify this at some point in the future. But right now, the Attorney General is giving to municipalities is that the, it runs with your license. So when your license expires in one year, you've got to get re-fingerprinted in one year.
Last comment?
Yeah, um, and basically, this will do nothing for the people who are not licensed and are out there doing their own thing.
That's right.
The police would have to check and-
Of course.
You know, and lock them up or whatever, or, you know, take away their merchandise.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all that can be done. We have to depend on enforcement.
Yes. Okay, the motion has been made and properly second. Let's take a vote. Who seconded the motion? I know it was made by you. The motion was made.
Monte, Almonte.
No. Yeah, there was a second.
Almonte, okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it? Okay, let's move into appropriation. Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, Document one ninety fourteen.
Mr. President, these are all new documents that have to be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee?
Oh, they are. Oh, I thought that you had already discussed that.
No.
Okay, okay. So all three documents have to be referred to Budget and Finance Committee, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then let me do that right now. I'm going to refer Document one ninety fourteen to the Budget and Finance Committee, Document one ninety-one fourteen to the Budget and Finance Committee, and Document one ninety-two fourteen to the Budget and Finance Committee. I would like to entertain a motion to take Document one-ten-fourteen out of table matters.
So moved?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate you taking Document number one-ten dash fourteen out of order. Specifically, this applicant had come to our last meeting and sat through the whole meeting. Only be told at the end, we hadn't got the report from the police department that we needed, so we could not deal with her matter that night. So I, infamus to her. I'm just going to pass out a map to every one of her establishment. Look if I could ask you to pass it down. Miranda's Restaurant is at two ninety, I believe, is it? Two ninety South Broadway?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, I'm sorry. Eighty-nine South Broadway, in South Lawrence. And they had requested a special, they're requesting permission to put tables and chairs on the sidewalk. And they do sell alcohol at their establishment. So there was some back and forth because our specific ordinance for selling alcohol on a sidewalk is very strict. You have to come in through the establishment to get out to the patio area. It cannot be something where you enter from the outside. I did have extensive conversation with Lieutenant Conway, who said they would be willing to support a proposal if no alcohol is served outside. That is what the applicant had brought before the ordinance committee, that this would only be for food, and that they recognize should one of their patrons bring alcohol outside, it's at the risk to the owner and to the owner's license, that their patrons could be risking their license if anyone brings alcohol outside into this area because it doesn't meet the establishment. It's fine, it meets the criteria, like Heavenly Donuts brings food out onto the sidewalk. It meets the criteria for food. It does not meet the criteria for alcohol. So where they have the all-alcohol license, I just want to stress to the other committee members, they're actually shy, I think it's three inches. The criteria for food on the sidewalk is a twelve-inch side, a twelve-foot sidewalk. I've got an engineer's drawing that says eleven feet, eight inches. An engineer in the room today told me that it was eleven feet, seven inches, but either way, it's close, but it does not meet the full twelve feet. That being said, the proposal that she's putting out, you know, there would be two tables, each with two chairs, there would be a gated railing around it. There would be temporary railings that would have to be brought in each night. She would be telling us what time they're going to stop serving food out there tonight as part of her application process. But if she chooses to go forward with this, it's strictly for food only, and-
You understand that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that the, should they be caught serving alcohol in that area, it would be a complete violation of their license, which would be suspended immediately.
Do you want to tell us, on to what time you're going to be serving food there?
What was the question?
On to what time will you be serving food?
Like at, because it's summer, like at nine?
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
Nine or ten?
Let's say ten o'clock. Madam Chair?
I just wanted to see what they had filed so far, if it had any time restrictions on it, but, um- We did extend what? Well, what time do you serve food till now, inside?
I, my license is until three A M., but I, I'm closing with the license alcohol one, one and two. I'm not using the, the license completely because I don't, I don't stay until three, until three A M. It's too late for me.
I just want to-
The requirement is that the tables have to be removed by eleven-thirty?
Hey, I just want to, we, and I don't, we've had this conversation before, and I want to just be very clear. There was a very strong history of problems with a prior owner at this establishment.
Yes.
Um, and so that is not this owner, so I want to be very clear with that. But when you start serving food after dark outside, it's going to lend itself to, I don't see people just grabbing a sandwich later at night. I mean, that's really when people going out for a drink and something to eat. I, I think she's putting herself more at risk by keep serving food out there. You know, Officer Conway was saying seven or eight o'clock, she's saying nine or ten o'clock. I just think eleven-thirty is with the alcohol, like when the Heavenly Donuts doesn't have tables on the chairs till eleven-thirty at night.
Excuse me, can I say something? The table was there last year, and I had liquor license, and I never serve alcohol outside because I know that just for food. The table was there before I had the restaurant, and after I had the license, table was there. Last, on the summer last, last year, the table was there.
So what time did you stop serving food last year?
What happened, being honest, like two times, people sit down there for the whole summer because, because I don't sell alcohol. People stay more when they, when there's alcohol, they stay more time there. I use the table because when I have the table outside, more people can see the business. The business look nice. That's why I told you before I want the table. That's the main reason. It's not about alcohol or the stuff. I know that I can control that because if I'm not there, my husband is there, we are, we both are on the license, and we know what is our responsibility with that.
Okay, so you project that you're going to be serving food on to nine?
Yeah.
I'd be comfortable at nine o'clock.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions, Mr. Tumi?
Thank you. So this diagram that we see here, the person can come right off the sidewalk and go into the restaurant?
Yeah.
He will go inside, yes.
He can go inside.
Yes.
Now, what would, why wouldn't they find a way of setting it up such that they can come in and go out and have alcohol outside? Is there a cost?
Physically, the way our ordinance reads, you have to go into the restaurant and only be able to access the patio from inside the restaurant.
Right.
If you're going to serve alcohol.
Right.
So it would just be too expensive for her to move her doorway around.
So she actually need another doorway to go into and then come back out of.
You have to go into the restaurant and then come back. So she'd have to have her doorway like at one end, and then maybe a second doorway at the other end, and then the patio kind of in the middle. Like next door, Terra Luna, or Lofton Lidl is fenced in that same way, but you've, you've got to have-
I understand that. I understand that.
So if she wants to serve alcohol, she's got to move the doorway.
Okay, she's going all alcohol license?
All alcohol, yeah.
What's that?
I'm thinking.
Mr. Tumi?
I'm thinking.
Oh, you're thinking, okay.
I see the smoke.
Maybe I'm prejudiced. I used to be on the Licensing Commission, and I, I, I never would have approved this type of thing. So I'm going to have to vote no on it this evening, but I just wanted to let you know that I think the, I think the, it's, it's too dangerous to set it up and not, and not have it happen.
Yeah, I, I think-
I've seen it happen in other places.
I feel like the applicant is taking on a big risk to herself, that she's trusting her patrons won't try to walk out there with a drink. And I just, I'm willing to grant her the license if that's what she really wants, but I also think eight-thirty on a Friday night, somebody's had a few drinks, and they just want to get outside and sit in the cool air. You're going to be able to catch them every single time. You're just putting yourself at risk. If that's what she wants to do, I'm willing to give her the chance, but I just want to make sure you recognize the risk to your license.
Yeah, I know. I understand.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, in my experience is that there's not that much money made in food. There's an awful lot of money made in drinking.
Yeah, exactly.
And if it goes down on a Friday and a Saturday night at nine o'clock at night, it's, to me, it's kind of a, a no-no. I mean, it wouldn't happen, but that's my own opinion. I'm going to be voting no on this evening.
Councilor Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am personally a big fan of having chairs and tables set out outside of, you know, food businesses because that would attract people into the, the business area. And, and when you walk in neighboring cities, well, not necessarily our neighbor, but like the city of Lowell, the city of April, that's something that we see often in their downtown, in their main streets, and it is very attractive. And I have personally been to this business before. The owners, they have proven to be responsible people that will make sure that everything is in order. And I've seen it personally, how, you know, the, the potential setup would look like. And I think that it will, it will be very good for, for the community to have business owners such as the lady before us today to do this type of things for our city. We, we need to attract, we need to attract that to the city of Lawrence. And I do understand that alcohol tends to be the, the biggest moneymaker for this type of businesses, but I also feel that there's a, a community out there that is not looking to, to be drinking alcohol, but rather going out with their family members and their children and having a nice meal at a nice restaurant where it's family-oriented. And this will give that opportunity for someone that, that's not looking for alcohol, but an alternative to have a good meal at a nice location. So it is a, a good way to say, look, families can come, they can eat, they can enjoy.
Yeah.
And be separated from people that are looking to have alcohol. And, and children could be part of that. So I think that it, it's something that I will strongly support because I see great potential. And I encourage more business owners that have, that sell food in the city to come and ask for this. I think that this will be great. We need to bring vibrant C N and, and whatnot to our city streets.
That's true. Do you, Council President? I just want to quickly say that I've had the opportunity to, to listen to this applicant for a pretty long time now. And I think that because she has demonstrated that she looks to be in compliance, everything we've asked her to do, she has done. That in itself should give us the incentive to provide her with the license so that she can get the opportunity to have this outside experience for some of her patrons. Other people have done it. I always talk about, as a good example, the Tierra Luna. Before they actually went through the big expense of creating the in and out, they were told that they could not serve alcohol, and they in fact did not. There was no problems when they had the opportunity to allow people to sit outside and eat. So I'm definitely in favor of this. I know you've come back time after time after time.
For time.
Yeah, and it's time for you to get your license, so I do make an appeal that people be sensible. It's not the same.
Every year?
Or rather, you are asking for the same opportunity that other restaurants have. So I think you should have it, and I encourage my fellow counselors to also vote in favor and not add any further restrictions to your request.
Thanks.
Just a quick question. So, do they have to renew this every year?
Uh, no, I think, no, this is not required to be renewed every year, no.
So once you get one-
Once you get granted, it would be for as long as it is revoked.
So I believe that the applicant mentioned that she had this last year.
Yeah, last year, the table was, when I, I don't, I don't even know that when we bought the restaurant that the table was approved. And then somebody told me from the city hall that was, the table was approved to be outside. Then this year, when I put out the table, because I told that I had the permit, somebody come there, called the city, I don't really know what happened, and said that if I had the permit, they asked me, and then I come over here, they told me that I need to go to the, to you again in order to get the permit back.
Okay, so just, just, I'm, hopefully I'm understanding you correctly. You said that last year you had it, you were going outside, you thought you had the right approvals, didn't come before the council.
I have it before. I had the liquor license.
For the, I'm sorry, for the liquor license?
And I have, when I opened the restaurant, I didn't have liquor license. So the table was there, okay, then-
Outside.
Outside, yeah. And when I get the liquor license- And, uh, when I get the liquor license, I continue using the table. But, um, they told me, um, I don't know who else pronounced the name, the Cohen? Cohen told me that I cannot sell alcohol outside.
Cannot serve alcohol outside?
No alcohol outside.
No alcohol, okay.
Then when I put the table this year, somebody called the city, asking if I had the, the permit. And then they told me that I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I need to come to you again in order to put the table back there.
So you had it, just to make it clear, I'm sorry.
The situation is-
She bought the business from somebody else.
Yeah.
Previous owner-
Previous owner.
-told her that he, he had approval to have two tables outside.
And did they have, is that true? They did have approval? And so when they changed the owner, they had to come before it?
Exactly.
Yeah.
But she didn't know that she would have-
I didn't know that I need to come over here. I told that something come with the business, and then they told me, no, it's something go with the owner. Then that's why I come over here.
You did the writing.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, I would like to enter a motion to approve document one ten fourteen. Motion has been made and properly seconded, or in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Roll call.
Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
No.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Almonte?
Yes.
Counsel Aquino?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
And Counsel President?
Yes, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Then, when I can start?
Tomorrow.
I'm sorry?
Tomorrow? Oh, I need to wait for something in writing?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the thirty days.
Motion is-
No.
Motion has been made to waive the thirty days.
No.
Motion has been properly seconded, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Roll call.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Aquino?
Yes.
Counsel Almonte? Norbert, Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Tumi?
No.
Counsel LaPlante?
No.
Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
And Counsel President?
Yes.
Just to-
Six.
What I was gonna ask right before that excitement was, um, the, the original motion was for chairs outside with no alcohol to be served, just food, and until nine P.M.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can start tomorrow.
I believe the ayes have it. Okay. You can start right away.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I would like to enter a motion to take document one sixty-six fourteen out of order.
So moved?
Motion has been made and properly seconded, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Chair of the Audit Committee?
Oh, um, document number one sixty-six, actually it's from Budget and Finance, but the, um, applicant is here. It's the Asahi America Tax, the TIF, it's six fifty-five, End of Street.
Where is it?
Yes, give me one. So, um, you have it somewhere. Thank you, Mr. President. We had, um, Mr. Abel Vargas that came before the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting, and also, uh, Mr. Frank O'Connor from the administration, both of them, uh, to present to us the, um, tax incremental finance agreement for Asahi America, which is a new company that will be, um, uh, moving to the city of Lawrence. Um, and they are planning to move, I believe, somewhere in the month of October of this year, if I am not mistaken. And we have the documentation in our packet, and it was sent with a favorable recommendation, uh, for approval.
Are you making that informal motion?
I make that informal motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Go ahead.
In the Subcommittee meeting, we had some suggestions, um, and I would like to give the opportunity to-
Sure, sure. Um, Abel Vargas, Business Development Director, City of Lawrence. Um, so, uh, just, just to give you some, some, um, background information, uh, this was sent to the Budget and Finance Committee, and as Counsel Vasquez mentioned, was sent up with a favorable recommendation. The, um, the document that's in front of you, um, is a document to enter into an agreement with, uh, Asahi America that has decided to, um, to house their North American headquarters here in the city of Lawrence, moving from Malden, Massachusetts. Asahi America will be bringing with them ninety-four, um, employees, um, from their existing location, and is committed to adding an additional twenty-five jobs. What this tax incremental, uh, financing, uh, agreement does, it allows them to have some, some savings on the additional, um, assessed value of the property. And it allows us to issue a schedule on that, um, so that we reap some benefits as well as, as they do. During the, the Budget and Finance Committee, there was, there was a few concerns, um, in, in regards to the, um, to the requirement that the jobs that do come to the city, um, are made available to residents of the city. Um, and that was definitely duly noted. Um, so I, what you have before you is an, an amended version of the document that was sent over. Um, and there, there are a few changes. The, um, the fir-, the first change I'd like to call out, which is not a, a big deal, is, um, rather than calling the organization Asahi America Exchange LLC, um, they like to be referred to as, uh, Asahi America LLC. So that's reflected in the document, that's different than what was in the original, um, document. And the, the additional, um, information, um, which is the, if you look at, where, the, the third section, it says, whereas Asahi America Inc. will relocate ninety-four jobs by December twenty fourteen, and will create an additional twenty-five jobs during the term of this TIF agreement, of which the city of Lawrence requests that Asahi America make reasonable effort to hire residents of Lawrence to fill approximately thirty percent of the new jobs. So the, the, the discussion was during the Budget and Finance that, um, by, by law, we're not necessarily able to, um, with any real teeth, demand that they, um, that they hire people from the city. But we, the counselors in the Budget and Finance Committee wanted to make sure that, um, that the gentleman from Asahi America was well aware that, um, as part of this agreement, we would like for him to make every single possible intent to hire people from the city. Um, so we put that language in there, um, and then that's, that's, that's pretty much it.
To finish with my comment, um, I also know, well, we know that we can't demand, but it will give them, like, a credit, 'cause it's not, it might be not your only time to come to the city and ask, um, that we help you on your business. So in order to have with us, the city, that, um, extra credit of trusting your company, it's the same way that we don't demand, but we know if we go back, as we go back on the records for the state, and you were, um, in top of the thirty percent, and you get people from Lawrence, that will get you at least my support. So we know that we can't demand, but it will be helpful for the company to have that as one of the things that they accomplish.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just have, um, just to reiterate and read very carefully what you just read. It says, whereas Asahi America Inc. will relocate ninety-four jobs, which means they're gonna bring ninety-four people who are already working for them from Malden into the city of Lawrence, and will create twenty-five additional jobs during the term of this TIF agreement, which is ten years. So during those ten years, they're gonna create ten yor-, ten jo-, um, twenty-five jobs during the tenor of the ten years. And it says here, of which the city of Lawrence requests that Asahi, uh, Asahi America make every reasonable effort to hire residents of the, to fill approximately thirty percent of those twenty-five new jobs, which means five, which is a third.
It's, it's more than five, though.
Well-
Seven and a half.
Okay, uh, seven and a half jobs. It's, 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 you know, and, and to create seven and a half jobs within a ten-year period for the amount of money that they're asking for on this TIF, when we're basically giving an incentive to this company to come and try and make a difference in our city, and the reason why we're doing this, and we have been doing this, is because we want our unemployment rate to go down, because we want the citizens of the city of Lawrence to be able to benefit from this, not just these companies who are coming into the city of Lawrence and want us to give them the exemption of a TIF. And the wording, how it is in here, they can create this one-third of jobs within the last two years of their tenor here within our city of this TIF. I will not be voting in favor of this tonight, thank you.
Um, if, if, if I could respond, um, the, um, during this process, I took the opportunity to, to look at some of the previous, the previous agreements that have been put forth, um, to the same body. Um, and this happens to be a little less generous, slightly less generous than what we've offered over the years. Um, and, and we took into account, and I, I tried to develop a, a sense of, a calculation to say, X number of jobs represents, um, X percent of relief. Um, and it's not scientific, but I, I try to gauge based off of previous TIF agreements and previous relief that were, was associated with the job creation, and try to come up with something that was reasonable, um, based on, on some of the historic. So what we're proposing here isn't, isn't, um, out of the realm of what we've done before. Um, what I will say about this, this TIF agreement, and oftentimes people, um, summarize the program as, as tax-free type of, uh, of arrangement, but that, that's not the case. The property in, in question is assessed at seven point six million dollars. So the, um, the property as it stands pays about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes. So this additional investment, um, that they will be making to the building roughly in the amount of three million dollars, um, of which will increase the property value about half of that, uh, one point five, one point five million dollars. The, the relief is on one, that one point five million dollars. They will still be taxed at the same exact ra-, um, rate as it currently taxed at for the other seven point six million dollars, which they will, they will, they're paying now and will continue to pay, um, throughout the life of, of this agreement.
If I may through you, Counsel President, the other things, true, what types of jobs will be created for, for the citizens of the city? What type of, um, uh, will they be entry-level positions? Are they gonna be director positions? Are they going to be, um, you know, uh, are they gonna be able to grow in these positions? Or are they just gonna be, um, you know, standard, just a position where you're gonna come in? And this is, there's, um, there's a lot more that I, I think, um, I would like to have explained in this situation, especially where I have been looking into the companies that we already give TIFs to, to make sure that they have, that they're complying with what they said that they were gonna comply with, the unemployment rate percentage that they were gonna have from the city of Lawrence. And the reason why we do this is because we want our unemployment rates to go down. But then here, we leave it kind of open-ended, where it says that in their, in their, in their tenor time, um, they would, they would make the, the reasonable effort to hire these residents, when they're saying that twenty-five additional jobs are gonna be created when they're giving us this number. But when you look at the thirty percent, it only means seven, within a ten-year tenor. So that, to me, leaves it so open-ended. We don't know, you know, if they're gonna do that at the last year, if, when they're gonna do that, and to, and, and if they do that in the last year, they'll be in compliance. But it will make, it will have no benefit for the citizens of the city of Lawrence, which our number-one reason for them being able to, us giving them the space in our city is so that we can lower our unemployment rate, so that the citizens of the city of Lawrence can benefit from this. And not just from an entry-level position, because we have a lot of educated people in our city that would benefit from being able to, to, to grow within a company, as this company, when it comes in to, to, to service the city of Lawrence. And to have ninety-four jobs come into our city, um, how, how quickly are these ninety-four jobs going to be the company itself? And then, as they grow, they're gonna try and create these other seven, seven possible opportunities for the citizens of the city of Lawrence, or how is that gonna function? Like, to me, I would like to, I, I would need more information, 'cause that is the reason why. And, and as you have said, you're looking into the history of the companies that we have given TIFs to. But who is babysitting to make sure that these requirements are met?
Yep, I, I could answer, I could answer all of those questions, I think. The, the first, the first thing, the first point I'd like to make is that we're not, we're not giving them anything. They purchased the building for eleven point five million dollars, so that, that's, that's the, just point of clarification. And they're, aside from, uh, aside for that eleven point five million dollars that they purchased the building for, they're making, um, improvements upwards of five million dollars. So they are making an investment into city property and, um, and choosing to, to locate here. So I, I do give them credit for that. But the exciting part about this, this company is that, um, it, it does allow for growth. Um, they, they have an operation of, of distribution, they have a, a manufacturing component to their, to their, um, to their operation, and they also have a, a research and development, um, component. Uh, this company is a Japanese-owned company, and their North American headquarters is gonna reside in the city of Lawrence. Um, so we are excited, 'cause when we, we talk about, um, economic development, and we talk about workforce development, we wanna make sure that we are able to offer our residents a job, a placement, um, uh, for a job, where they're able to grow, so they could come in as, as a person that works in distribution and work into a manufacturing, advanced manufacturing type of environment, and possibly move into research and development and, and even management. Um, so the, um, the, the twenty-five jobs, um, I, I understand the number seems low, when you talk about the, the requirement that we're asking them of thirty percent, and we're, we're not demanding that they do that, we're asking them. It, it seems low, and I would, I would agree with that. Um, but it, it's consistent with some of the, the other agreements that we've made. Um, and the investment that they're making into the city, um, is gonna reflect in some job growth, and also the redevelopment of, of a building that has been vacant, um, for about two years now.
What would, what would some of the proposed positions that might come to the city would be? And in what time are they proposing that these positions would be available for the citizens of the city of Lawrence to apply for?
Those, those questions are super specific, but we have Mr. Harrington here, who's the CFO, who can answer that.
If you could, please, thank you.
First, thank, thank you very, thank you very much for, for listening tonight.
Identify yourself.
My name is Steven Harrington. I'm the CFO, uh, of Asahi America. Your concerns are valid, absolutely. Uh, unemployment is highest here than it is in the state, correct?
Correct.
We are bringing our company to this town. In doing so, we've agreed to, uh, bring in twenty-five new jobs. These are new jobs. We have a factory where we produce, uh, thermoplastic pipes and valves. We are a distributor's distributor, so we sell to other distributors in the United States and South America. Eight years ago, we were a twenty-three million dollar business. Today, we're a fifty million dollar business. In five years, we, we have hoped to be a sixty-five million dollar business. To achieve that, we're gonna need to hire people. Hiring people means we need warehouse personnel, okay? So they don't have to be college-educated, they can be high school-educated, we hope that they can read and write. Um, we need engineers. We have a full engineering staff, where we look for degreed engineers and non-degreed engineers, associates-degree engineers. So these jobs are gonna be growing and expanding. We're also, uh, spending almost a half a million dollars on a R and D facility within this plant. Within that R and D facility, there will be more engineers, and there'll be more opportunities for growing the business and growing jobs. We employ, of the ninety-four people, about fifty people are production operations people. We have a, a full machine shop with CNC machines. These are, uh, automatic, programmable machines. You need to be qualified to run those machines. Those jobs are gonna be open. We turn every year about ten percent through attrition, who people that don't work out for the company or move on their own. Those jobs are gonna be turning. In the past, in Malden, we would always normally hire from Malden. And those employees live in the area, commute to work, can walk to work, many of them. We're gonna be moving those ninety-four people out here. A lot of them, some of them, we hope not all of them, but a lot of them may not make it. We're gonna be looking for new employment. We're gonna be looking for people who are local, that are gonna be able to show up to work every day, do their jobs, and grow with the company. You know, we're, we're a proud company, we've grown, um, we have the full range of benefits for employees. We're gonna be doing our manufacturing, and, and our operation is coming to this city where we need services from the city. So we're gonna be relying on you to provide electricity, to provide police, fire protection. We're gonna be visiting your restaurants. We're gonna be employing groundskeeping people. These things are all gonna happen as we grow, and so I believe there are opportunities. Seven and a half people is not a lot, okay? The way the contract's written, you're asking us to do our best. I think we can do better than the seven and a half, but I don't think it needs to be written into the contract that doesn't really have, as Abel said, teeth. Okay, it's, it's, we're gonna do the best. I've already talked to Abel, I've talked to the- I've already talked to Abel, I've talked to the mayor. We want to get in touch with local hiring placement agencies. Right now, we have employed two people out of a temporary agency who are from Lawrence. They're on a temporary basis. If they work out, we're going to hire them full-time. We're already starting to recruit from this area. So, your point is absolutely valid. Asahi, we employ 117 people, 94 of which work in the state. We're not going to solve your problem for unemployment, but we will contribute to helping make it better.
So, in your tenure of, like, saying within the first year or maybe two years of you having your company here up and running and getting a little bigger, and obviously, you're going to have more space, so therefore, you're going to need more employees. Do you think that within that two-year or maybe first-year tenure that you would be amping yourself up to create or be hiring new people within that time? Only because the way that it was put here was put that, you know, that open-endedly, you know, this could have a potential of not being a company that really needs that many other people to join the company for it to run, and therefore, these jobs and the fulfillment of this agreement can be, have had in the past, in the last year or maybe two years of its tenure. What I want to make sure in this agreement or proposal, as you had stated before with no teeth in, that we don't continue to do this, because it's the city who then suffers from that. And I don't want that to continue to happen. And seven jobs is minimal to a company that, from $23 million grew to $50 million, and to only offer, be able to offer, seven and a half jobs, I think is minimal, to me, looking from the outside. So, and I just want to make it fair, so that when we bring companies into our city, that we are looking to grow within the city, not just to grow and use the city for growth, to have the people of the city grow within this company. And for, like you say, you're going to need engineers and stuff like that. We have wonderful, you know, the vocational technical school's going to be right down the street from you. You know, that there are opportunities there to let the kids who are going through those programs know that there are going to be opportunities of them making grander money for themselves if they become part of, say, a company like yours, your workforce, and have them be part of these situations. But I just want to make sure that we don't overlook the situation and allow, just allow the city to be used, because it's been done before, and we are supposedly moving forward with new ideas, new intentions, a new administration. And we just want to make sure that the old doesn't become the new old, that we continue to move forward in a positive way.
I just, the... The term being used, I think that the term is not accurately described what's going on here.
Not with this specific, but within what's happened before?
Okay, all right.
That's what I'm trying to say. I don't want it to become the old-old, to become the old-new.
I just want to be clear. The point of private industry is not to just offer jobs. The point of industry is to be profitable. So, they will add jobs to the extent that they could be profitable. So, if we continuously assume that because they make 23 or 30 or 50 million dollars, that they have to give up themselves to add more jobs just for the sake of creating jobs, then we're setting up our businesses to fail. So, if you think that a profit margin should reflect on what a company is willing to give, a municipality or a neighborhood or a city, then we're not doing a good job of reflecting our economic development policy. And I just want to be clear that when we talk about profitable businesses, that we do it in a context that they run the business, they put their money up, they create the jobs. And what we do is provide them with support so that we could help foster that growth. And asking them to give more than what they need in order to operate their business just doesn't make any sense, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Well, we're also offering them the space, and we're offering them...
No, we're not. They paid $11.5 million.
I understand that.
They did not buy it from the city, they bought it from another private organization.
I understand that, but if we, the city, don't agree with this and we say no, guess what? Then they can't come to our city.
Point of information.
And, you know, I'm just trying to... I'm not going to make this even more lengthy, because from what I see, like we said, we're giving a proposal here that has no teeth, so why are we voting on this tonight? Thank you.
Who was claiming point of information?
Just a point of information. I did ask at the subcommittee level if Asahi America will have still moved to the city of Lawrence, whether or not this will be approved. And the answer at that moment, when I asked Mr. Barga, was yes, that they are looking forward to moving to the city of Lawrence, and they are not necessarily just simply relying on this TIF. It will be great for them to receive it, and I personally, I support it, because I think it's the right thing to do. But the answer was that they will move here regardless.
Counselor Bernard, and then Counselor LaPlante.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Mr. Harrington for being here tonight. This facility is in my district, District E is where you're located. And before Asante came, we had a really big vacant building. That's what we had. So, I just need people to keep that in mind. Now, we have a reputable company that wants to come here. They want to put their North American headquarters here, and they want to invest in Lawrence. I mean, I do think that that's something that really needs to be given weight and consideration. And the alternative is if they don't do that, we're left with that same big vacant building. Not only do they want to move here, they're saying they're going to improve the building and invest in the building even further. So, I mean, I do think we need to look at what we're being offered. Just before this gentleman tonight was a nice lady, Miranda's. We just gave her the outdoor seating. You have 94 people that come to Lawrence, those people are going to need to eat lunch somewhere. They may wind up at Miranda's, which is literally blocks away from this facility. They may wind up somewhere else in between, Carleen's or some other restaurant locally. So, I do think other businesses will gain from this coming here. Certainly, they're going to need to buy gas, get their car fixed while they're in their lunch break, do their dry cleaning. I think the local businesses in that area will definitely benefit from bringing in this company with 94 people. And that's a base number of 94. It's going to grow beyond that to at least 25 more. So, I support the proposal, I encourage the fellow councilors to support it. I also want people to keep in mind what a TIF is. A TIF doesn't mean you get, pay zero taxes. As was stated, even with the full benefit of the TIF, we're going to be getting hundreds of thousands of new tax dollars from this program, even with the benefit of the TIF. So, do people, please keep that in mind. While there is, while they are getting a benefit, there's still substantial benefit back to the city. Thanks.
So, four points real quick. I want to ask Mr. Harrington, sir. Mr. Harrington, you could have, I'm presuming you could have, your business could have moved anywhere else. I'm presuming that it could have been several other communities, am I right?
Yes.
Could I ask you why you decided to choose Lawrence?
The building presented an opportunity for us that fits us perfectly. We had been looking for quite some time. We were actually considering building out on the property that we do own in Malden. The numbers didn't work for us with the space requirement that we needed. And if we had pushed it to the point of building out into our parking lot and going up a level on the building that we occupy, we were only looking at about another five years. We soon expanded our search to outside of the Malden area. Within Malden and the inner city, there was nothing available that was currently built. There was plenty of land available, but again, the price of the land and having to build on it was just, it just didn't make sense. We soon found a place, an opportunity in Andover that we looked at and required a substantial amount of build-out to be able to move our operation there. We also found a building in Burlington, right on Mall Road there. And that also would have required, a very old building, would have required a substantial amount of investment on the company's behalf. Didn't make so much sense. And this building did come up for sale. Before they were selling the building, they were trying to find a lease company for the building. And they were unsuccessful to do so. We currently own our building in Malden today. So, as a company, what we want to do, of course, is to buy this new, we have bought this new building, and we are going to sell the building that we're in now. And so, in doing so, it makes it attractive for us. My frank opinion is that Lawrence is a great city. I live in North Andover. For me, my commute just got better. But, you know, we, as a board, we spent a long time talking about Lawrence. And I was one voice in the room defending the city. I bring my family here, and we have dinner in the city. I have friends that we come into the city and go to the nightclubs. We go, you know, we come to the city. I think the city has a bad reputation that I love that this new administration is trying to turn around. So, we are making an investment in Lawrence. This building was a great opportunity for us. It's a giant space. If you haven't seen it, you're more than welcome to come visit.
I'll take you up on that offer.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we are coming.
So, you would consider what you're providing here as manufacturing jobs, correct?
Manufacturing jobs, you know, professional jobs, engineering jobs, accounting. I have a small accounting department, but soon enough, I'll have to grow.
So, you know, one of the things that we do in the city of Lawrence, we had, we offered a TIF, and Counselor, you may recall, for a chicken restaurant. You know, that was a restaurant. I don't know, I voted against the TIF, I thought it was kind of nutty. But in this particular case, we're going to be voting for a TIF for manufacturing jobs. We are trying to find manufacturing jobs in the city, not just service-based companies. We need, that's the engine by which the dominoes that we're talking about here, you talked about the lawn service, the other subcontractors, et cetera. That's what we're trying to do. What he's bringing to the table, what his company's bringing to the table, is what we're trying to attract in the city of Lawrence. And so, I think it's fantastic that he found our city, that there was the kind of nexus that provided, where there was an opportunity. He could have gone elsewhere, they decided to come here because it made sense. So, manufacturing jobs in our city by an organization that's looking to grow is a kind of a company we should be trying to entice. And I'm glad that they're deciding they want to come here. So, good for you for wanting to do that. Regarding the no-teeth stuff, if I remember correctly during the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we talked about case law and that they're prohibited by actually putting certain numbers. You cannot provide and say, you must provide X number of jobs as part of the TIF agreement. So, while that may have happened years ago, we are prohibited today from going ahead and doing that. So, the fact of the matter is that the language that's in there was only because the committee asked that at least there'd be some sort of record, that there'd be an acknowledgement that that's the driving force. And so, the administration saw that, you know, acquiesced to the committee's request and put that in there. And of course, what I'm sensing now is that the company finds that to be not offensive and okay. And it's a goal, they're trying to even go and surpass. And so, I applaud you. The last four points, and my last point is this. Somebody from the mayor's office challenged me and said, "Counsel LaPlante, I want you to see if you can try to get some internships for the city. We've got people, we've got college graduates who are looking for jobs, college graduates who are looking for things that perhaps they're not looking, maybe non-paying jobs, just to get some experience on there. I can't force this, it's not a condition at all for my vote, I'm going to be supporting it tonight. I would encourage you to consider at least looking for at a Lawrence, a recent college grad or a graduate student for a kind of an internship here, where it doesn't have to be a paying job, but just to get that kind of experience so we can homegrown our talent a little bit."
We have a budget every year for summer help. You know, we're always looking for summer help. It's in the warehouse, it's in my accounting department, it's in customer service. Maybe not so much in the engineering group, but we are looking for people to help. You know, you mentioned the Vocational Tech School down the street. I think it's a great thing, and we look, it's very difficult to find a CNC operator who knows what they're doing. VOTEC is down the street. I think that, you know, and I'm going to bring it to my board to suggest a summer internship for some of these students to come in, and whether we pay them, I don't know, a summer job kind of wage. But that is an investment in our company. I'm not just doing it because I'm a nice guy, and I am a nice guy, but... There is a reason, you know. We don't, manufacturing left this country 10, 15 years ago. It's now coming back. And we're very excited as a company to be part of a manufacturing industry. We're proud of our company, we're coming to Lawrence, you know, we need your support.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez.
Thank you. Through you, Council President, I'd just like to ask very quickly, what do you do? What is your product?
Yeah, the product is, it's thermoplastic pipes and valves. So, it's plastic pipes and valves. The industries we serve are semiconductor industry. We serve the chemical industry. Customers in biopharmaceutical. Entertain, what we call entertainment is aquariums, water parks. These types of applications for our products are very varied. So, you know, municipal, we have municipal jobs. We have a double-contained pipe product. So, you know, water is a big industry that we serve as well.
Then, my next question is, do you have a great deal of work to do to reconstruct or renovate or refurbish the building?
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, we own the building today. There's some work we need to do in the offices, paint and carpet mostly. But in the warehouse area, it's a very large space, and we have very many operations. We have a machine shop operation, and we have various assembly operations. We have a large pipe fabrication operation. And so, each of these need their own separate area. And so, inside the warehouse, we're building spaces for those operations. Some of those operations require air conditioning, and so, we have to...
So, you'll need someone in air conditioning?
We're installing air conditioning in those spaces, and we're, again, we're adding an R&amp;D facility in some of the space as well.
Oh, cool. Now, I want to, I guess, ask of you. When you bring in the people that would do construction work, et cetera, I know we have somewhere in the city some kind of decree where we were supposed to be bringing in more of the local businesses and/or asking that if you bring a company in that is not local, that they'd be willing to at least bring in some of the people who are prepared to do that kind of work and lend a hand that way. I know a few years back, we had a really big problem because people were rebuilding some of these buildings, and they didn't pick the talent that we have here. And I know some people went out and were picketing, et cetera. But I know you don't have to, but it would be really great if you would take that into consideration when you're doing the reconstruction, refurbishing, renovations, et cetera.
Yeah, of course, I couldn't promise that we could do that. We are subbing the contract for the construction to a construction management company, and they will hire subcontractors. I can certainly make the request that they look for local contractors, you know, in the area to employ.
Where they would get a good price? Where I would think they would get a good price. And I think that if entrepreneurs like yourself, you know, and other capitalists, captains would join us in trying to get people to think that way, that it would be of great help to the city of Lawrence.
I will make a request, absolutely.
Thank you so much, I'd be so appreciative of it. Again, you know, there's kind of little stuff that we don't think about that could be really helpful for the city. And I just want to ask our Director of Economic Development, just to make sure that everybody understands at home the valuation base, which is the dollar amount that we will be seeing, right? Before we get into the 10%, 20%, how much is that?
The current tax taxable amount as it stands now?
Right.
Seven million, seven million six hundred and forty-one thousand.
Okay. So, I hope everybody heard that, because that is an important figure. And as it goes on to...
Yes, so the likelihood is that because of the way assessed values work and potential tax increases, not this year, because we're not raising taxes, but potentially, that... but potentially, that, that, that dollar amount will increase from 6.7% to 2.5% more and so on and so forth, depending on the assessment.
When you say 10%, that would be 10% of the new...
The appraised value.
Of the appraised value.
The additional value. So, if, if it, if it assesses that additional million dollars, it would be 10% of that million dollars.
And they will still be paying the base.
The base, right.
So, no matter what, you know, we're in the winning in terms that we, we have not been receiving any taxes from that building?
No, no, we have, um, Corporate Express and Staples. Staples, they, they have been paying their taxes.
They did pay their taxes and their water bill and all of that?
Correct, they're up to date with everything.
Okay, because we've had people leave without doing that. And, and just lastly, I know that, um, we may have sound, uh, kind of tough on the issues of jobs, et cetera. Is, is so many other people, when the, uh, TIF matured in terms that we were able then to get our full value and they left. Not only did they leave, but some of them, um, left us with water bills and the like. So, I just want to say that that's one of the reasons why, uh, we may seem a little bit reserved and it's not to beat up on any one company.
Right.
But it's the experience that when it got, when, when the contract got to maturity, we weren't able to collect anyone.
I, I know, I, I do understand, um, that, that we're all passionate about the, the advancement of our city and we want to make sure that we, um, when we make decisions about what we do, um, for our residents, that we're doing it, um, with our best foot forward. So, I, so I understand the passion and, and the interest to make sure that we get it right. So, I don't, I don't discount that.
As far as I'm concerned, this, um, company is bringing in, uh, something that we don't otherwise, uh, offer. All right, which is good, like, uh, chicken, where you could buy chicken anywhere, a lot cheaper than it was with the new company that got the TIF and that came in.
Right.
Um, so, and that it is large enough, uh, to provide some hope and, and put in, in a, at least trying to drive down the unemployment rate.
I appreciate that.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to concur with my counsel to my left here on his, uh, assessment of this, uh, this, this new business coming in. I'm very, very pleased with it moving in. So, I will be voting in favor of that this evening. But I do have a question in reference to the TIFs. How would the, uh, how would the TIF determine, uh, the number of years that a TIF is going to go into effect? Is that predetermined or is that something that's agreeable or how's that work?
Yeah, historically, the, um, from, from what I've been able to gather, they've been, um, rather arbitrary, um, the number of years. And it's, and it's supposed to be that the administration makes a proposal to the, the applicant and the applicant then negotiates in their favor, um, to get a more generous, um, offering on the TIF program. But what I tried to do in, in modeling the, uh, the TIF was that over the 10 years, I, I wanted to make sure that on that, that incremental amount that we received in that, in, in tax payment, the same relief that they got or try to get as close as possible. And, and I don't know if, if I'm making myself clear. Um, so like, if, um, if they're paying 10 bucks now and, um, and we're getting $0, that next year they'll get, they'll pay nine and we'll get one and eight and so on and so forth. So that at the end of the day, the sum of what they received over the 10 years is 10 bucks and ours is, you know, plus or minus one or two bucks. So that we get the same value from the TIF over the, the extended period that, that they're getting. That's how I tried to design the, um, the agreement.
The only reason I ask that, I know there is a, uh, there's a building in the city of Lawrence where they put a 10-year TIF on, but the first five years was dependent upon, uh, rental units and then the next five, the next five years of the TIF, they were going to convert these units to, to condominiums, which didn't occur. So, the TIF actually was based on the first five years, you know. But it had to go out 10 years because they didn't, they didn't convert. So, I didn't know whether or not there was a formula that, that's, that's being used or...
Yeah, well, the, that, the TIF that I think you're referring to, I, I consider it to be a, a very odd and, and I'm not sure how it was decided upon, but TIFs are supposed to be, um, has to be, there has to be jobs associated with it. Um, and I don't, I don't think many permanent jobs were created through that, that TIF agreement. But, um, from what I understand, there isn't any fixed methodology and/or equation to try to develop, uh, uh, the, the percentages that we're providing as relief.
Right, thank you.
Okay. I think it is important, uh, one thing that, uh, Counselor Alvarez mentioned, and that is that the company is going to be paying taxes on a base assessment of 7,641,000. And that the, um, the exemption is going to be based, uh, on a, um, capital improvement of 4,485,000. And obviously going to be prorated from 100% the first year all the way down to 10% the 10th year. And after that, 11th year, the company would be assessed at full value. Okay? We understand that.
And I just want to, want to make one other point. And, um, the, the permitting process for the type of work that they're, that they're going to be doing is substantial. So, to this point, they, um, they've paid 32 grand in permitting? Yeah, so, up to this point, they've paid approximately 32,000 in, um, in, um, for, for pulling, pulling that permit. So, um, you know, they're serious about the development that they're doing.
Just a point of information, uh, the Greater Lawrence Technical School has graduated a substantial number of machinists and CNN, uh, with CNN experience. So, I am sure, most certain that there's, a lot of them will still be here in the city of Lawrence, living in the city of Lawrence or Methuen, Andover or North Andover. The other thing is that the Greater, Greater Lawrence Technical School is going to, even though they closed their machine shop before, they are going to reintegrate their shop again. And it might be helpful if you can, uh, create a co-op system with the Greater Lawrence Technical School, which will be helpful not only to the school but also to you. Because you're going to get trained people, uh, for free, basically. They're going to train those people for you, uh, with the condition that you hire them, uh, as co-op students and hopefully in the, when they graduate, you will keep them.
I, I just want to make clear, the, the school that did not have a, a machine shop program was the vocational school and we just were issued a 1.2 million dollar grant from the governor's office, um, to reinstate our, our machine shop program.
They're going to bring it back.
Exactly. Okay, no more discussion?
The Lawrence High School doesn't have anything like that, that they can also...
No, the high school doesn't have a, a machine shop.
Okay. Do they not have an engineering department or anything like that, that they can bene, also benefit from this?
Uh, I doubt it. I, they're not prepared for that.
They got good math skills though and good writing.
Okay, uh, a motion to approve, uh, Document 16614.
Yeah.
It has, it has been made and properly seconded. Okay, uh, no more discussions. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Roll call.
Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Monte?
No.
Counsel Aquino?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
And Counsel President?
Yes. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counselors. This is, this is a big deal for our city, so thank you.
Very good.
Okay, um, let's move into committee report. And hopefully, it's going to be almost 10 o'clock. Hopefully, we can get all this done tonight.
That's why.
Uh, let's start with, uh, Document 12714 through Document 13114. And that will be the Chairman of the Housing Committee, Mr. LaPlante.
Counselor, uh, Counsel President, I'd be willing to relinquish that right now. We've got a lot of folks here. If we can move some of them out, no one here is for these surplus properties. We can wait till the end on those.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair of the Audience Committee, can you take over then? And, uh, let's see whether we can get all these people taken care of.
Gladly. Give it the best shot. Um, Document number 136-14 was the Bread and Roses Heritage Committee. They're requesting permission to use the Campagnon Common Park on September 1 from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM for their 30th Annual Bread and Roses Heritage Festival. Joshua Alba had appeared at the subcommittee. Um, the paperwork was in order. It came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to grant the permit and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any questions? Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counsel President. Um, similarly, at that same May 8 meeting, the, um, committee heard from the Merrimack, Document number 139-14 was the Merrimack Valley Habitat for Humanity in the YMCA requesting permission to use the Campagnon Common Park on Sunday, September 28th, from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM to hold their Brickman Triathlon. Jerry Puyot from the, um, ladies from the Y appeared before us. The paperwork was in order. It did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to approve. And I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments or questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair.
Document number 140-14 was also heard at that May 8th, um, ordinance committee meeting. This was a transient vendor license. It's a renewal. This is one of the, um, little push cards for the slush or frio frio, as we're calling it. It came up, the paperwork was in order and it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to renew and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments? Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counsel President. Similarly, at the, um, May 8 meeting, the ice cream truck vendor for Document number 143-14 is Ice Cream Truck at 53 Stevens Ave, a Ricardo Sequenat. Again, the paperwork was in order. It came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to renew and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments? Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Motion to go past 10.
Second.
Motion to go past 10, it has been made and properly seconded. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Let's continue.
Document number 146-14 was a transient vendor license registered out of 315 High Street. The applicant is an Angel Bisono. And again, this is the slushy cart and it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation for a renewal and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Comments? If there is none, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
The, um, committee also heard from the applicant at Document number 147-14, which was a transient vendor license registered out of 154 Margin Street. This was an Antonio Javier. Again, this is the frio frio and it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to renew and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments? If there is none, or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counsel President. Document number 148-14 was a transient vendor license out of 89 Saratoga Street, requested by Antonio Pata. And again, this is the frio frio and it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation for a renewal and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments? Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Um, thank you, Counsel President. Document number 151-14 was the Law Town Boxing Gym. They're requesting, requesting permission to hold tag days at the five corners of South Union Street in, at the Broadway Big and Beefy Corners. Um, just to clarify, each instance represents two dates, but one is a, um, the actual date and the other is a potential rain date, should the first date be rained. The applicants were at the subcommittee. We did have a substantial discussion on the item. It did come up with a unanimous favorable recommendation to approve and to make that in the form of a motion.
Sorry. Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments? Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counsel President. Um, similarly, a transient vendor license for Document number 153-14. This was a transient vendor registered out of 129 East Haverhill Street. This is a Raymond Gonzalez and I just want to take a quick look at that. This is not the frio frio hand cards. This is a more traditional, um, chimney truck with the tacos and burritos. Um, it is a renewal. It did come up with a favorable recommendation. The paperwork was in order and I'm just looking, make sure that the sign up is here from the fire department, which, yeah, it's here? Great, yeah, perfect. So, everything is, and we have a copy also. Everything's in order. It came up with a favorable recommendation and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments? Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Uh, Document number 156-14 was the Ebenezer Christian Church. They're requesting permission to use the Campagnon Common Park on Saturday, May 31st, from 11:00 AM to 4:30 for a religious event, Breaking Barriers, United for Peace in Lawrence. Ana Javier and, uh, Diaby de Jesus. Um, paperwork was in order. It came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments? Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
And, this last one, I just, um, thank you, Counsel... Philadelphia, yeah. I think this might have been the one, I think one of them was missing the paperwork. Santos Cruz? Do you have this one? This is what I don't have. I do have this because I have it in my hand. Yeah. The item is not till June, um, actually, the first one's coming up on May 24th. So, I guess maybe we could reach out to them and just let them know we need that filed? Uh, make it contingent upon that being filed?
Second.
So, making a motion to approve the Iglesia Cristiana Philadelphia, um, using the Cronin Park on May 24th, Raoul Park on June 14th, O'Connell Park on June 28th, and Kennedy Park on June 19th, from 3:00 to 6:30 for religious events, requested by Santo Cruz. And that's contingent upon them filing their, um, tax form with the clerk.
I believe that a gentleman has some documents there.
Right, that's why I wanted to ask if you could call it...
Will you come forward, please? Please identify yourself. Please identify yourself.
No, it's not.
Yes, my name is Santos Cruz, uh, 165 Haverhill. Uh, the purpose of this event is to bring the word of God, uh, to the city. Uh, there's different parts where there's a lot in need. Uh, and, uh, well, like I said, it's the purpose to bring the word of God, to preach the word of God.
Sir, this form is missing from your application. We, we want to approve the project. We love that you want to bring the word of God to the city. That's good. Um, we just need this one form. Do you have a form that has these three big black boxes on it? The form that looks like that in your paperwork?
I don't understand the question.
Can you show her your paperwork? Does the church have a facility here in Lawrence?
Uh, 165 Haverhill.
Yeah. So, um, while they'd be tax exempt, we still need to sign up for the water bill and the inspectional services. So, we, we need you to just file this form someday this week, sir, because...
El dueño. El dueño del edificio.
No, no, el dueño del edificio, el edificio es, eh, no, no.
He's not the owner of the building.
Speaks really good English, Mike.
Right, but the water bill and the inspections, yeah. Right, but the water bill and the inspectionals, yeah.
But he's not the owner.
Still, he can get in.
Yeah. It's okay. He should, they should file that. If you just file it by Friday, you can have your vent on Saturday, and you'll be all set, or Sunday.
Entendió? Ella dice que usted tiene que traer este formulario, aunque yo no entiendo por qué, porque usted no es el dueño de la propiedad, pero necesita-
Does he need translation?
He doesn't understand what you're saying.
Right, but does he not understand, because he doesn't understand what I'm saying, or does he, is it a language issue?
I think you speak perfectly. I think he's-
The owner of the building is Pastor Luis Leonor, uh, and, uh, he has his church there. We just, uh, use him, he has a reference to preach the Word of God in different parts, to evangelize. I'm an evangelist.
Great, that's, we, we're on the same page, sir. All I need is this one form to be filled out for the property that you have, where you have your services. Just fill out this one form, and, um, we'll, you file it to the City Clerk's office by Friday, and you'll be all set.
Okay.
So, I'm going to give you this one. This is a filled out one for another project, just so you know what you're asking for.
I need to bring it, I need to bring it the Friday, latest Friday.
Well, I do it before Friday, just because you need to go to the Water Department and show your water bill's paid, and you need to go inspectional service. You're a church, so you're tax exempt, so we don't have to worry about the property taxes being paid, but the water bill, and know that there's no inspectional violations.
Okay.
But you didn't own, you're not a church. This has nothing to do with you.
No problem. So where do I bring this? Over here?
You'd bring it to the City Clerk's office.
Sí. I know you don't want me to do this, but I'm going to do this. Ella dice que en ese formulario, lo venga, lo traiga antes del viernes al City Clerk, que usted sabe dónde es, donde se busca el, el certificado de nacimiento y todo eso. Ahí es que él está, y se lo entrega a él. Okay? Antes de la actividad. Okay. Entendió, verla? Okay. Gracias. Thank you so much.
Okay, a motion has been made pending the submission of the paperwork, and it has been properly second.
Yes.
Okay. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, God bless everyone.
Let's go back to the Housing Committee, Mr. Plant.
I want to pick a guy waiting here forever.
His personal-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, the Personal Committee. This document, Document 101-14, uh, the Mayor's Office has asked the City Council to take this as an emergency. Is it 161? Or 1? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me see. Yeah. 161-14. Uh, I have the paperwork here. Um, this, the reason for the request is that the, uh, they are having a hard time, uh, having meetings because of a lack of quota, and by, by we approving Euris González tonight on an emergency basis, uh, they're going to be able to have their meetings, regular meetings. So I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules first.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Madam Chair of the Personal Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Document 161-14 is the appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals of Euris González, and it's for a three-year term, and he is a first-time board member. Mr. Euris? It came up with a favorable vote, and I make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any questions?
We need a wave of 30 days or anything with this?
Say?
Do we need a wave? No? Okay.
To wait the 30 days?
But they're saying they don't have quorum.
They don't have quorum, so we should-
Just included in the motion.
Uh, let's, okay. Let's add to the motion to waive the 30 days, just in case.
Please. I made the motion, so I can-
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Are there any questions for, uh, for Mr. González?
A quick comment. I just want to applaud this candidate. I mean, this is the type of individual looking to fill some of our boards, especially the Zoning Board gentleman who went to the Dingley School, also went to Merrimack College, has a civil engineering degree, um, he's got a Bachelor of Science from there, and now he wants to serve our city. This is exactly the kind of person we're trying to get, serve on our boards, that kind of talent, that kind of skill set, so I welcome him, and I'll be voting for him this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, there is a motion on the floor to approve. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, you're open. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. González, you need to be sworn in tomorrow. So, again, Mr. Vargas, will you instruct them how to get in touch with Mr.?
With the clerk.
Okay?
Okay.
With the clerk. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's go back to committee reports. Mr. Plant.
Okay, there are about five, six properties. They're called surplus properties, and I'm just going to go one at a time before we start it. This is surplus, these are all surplus properties. What it means is that the city is looking to do something else with it. There's no need the city has for it right now, so once we go forward with this, declaring a surplus, then the city can go ahead and put things out for RFP, for example. So it's the first step of a multi-step process, which we will have a chance, potentially later on, to have a vote when it's some sort of, um, final conclusion or the, the real, that, what's it called? Uh, Real Estate Board, I think it's called, makes a determination. So long and short of this, step one is a non-controversial, just declaring a surplus. Number one, the Housing Committee by unanimous vote, voting in favor of Document 127-14, declaring surplus property at 300 306 Prospect Street, Tax Map 126, Lot 1, Block 1. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any questions? Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Just a question. Um, is there a reason why we can't just take these as a block?
Uh, we could take it as a block. I just want to make sure I read all that information to the record, but-
You could. Still do it.
Okay.
You want to do that?
No objections, Council President. I like to read the entire thing into a block. I ask my motion.
Sure. Motion to take the rest of the properties as a block.
Second.
There is a second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
So the following properties now, we're going to make this in a form of a motion, favorable recommendation for these following properties. 5557 Haverhill Street, Tax Map 88, Lot 15. 47 Hampshire Street, which is Tax Map 172, Lot 72.
Wait, I have 487. Is it 47 or 487?
What did I say? 487. I'm getting tired. 487? I'm sorry, 487. Next one is 25 Oxford Street, Tax Map 165, Lot 52, and the final one is 173, 175 Lawrence Street, Tax Map 150, Lot 28. I make all those declared surplus, make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Housing Committee. Um, there's, uh, there's some documents that we need to withdraw. Document 114-13, Document 37-14, I would like to entertain a motion to withdraw those documents.
Motion to withdraw Document 114-13, City Crime Statistics by Councilor Vasquez, Councilor Reyes, and Councilor Aquino.
There is a motion on the floor to withdraw those documents.
Second.
It has been properly second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yeah.
Discussion?
We put up this item on the agenda, and I think-
I'm sorry?
Councilor Reyes, Vasquez, and myself put this item on the agenda. I think we should meet up first and make the decision what we're going to do with this, because I think this is very important.
Okay, you don't want to-
No, I don't want the item to be withdrawn.
You want it to be removed?
No.
Okay.
Which on my motion?
Then, uh-
You sending it back? Or you want to send it to me?
Yes.
Document 114-13.
I'm sorry?
Motion to table Document 114-13.
Motion to table Document 114-13, it has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Document-
How about Document 37-14? Any opposition to that? The Planning Director is already-
Motion to withdraw Document 37-14, the appointment of Planning Director position by Mayor Dan Rivera.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There is another document that should be withdrawn, and that's Document 313-13.
313.
That was supposed to take place on May 25th, and I don't believe that it's going to take place at all. Am I correct, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I've been talking with him. He's going to do a festival probably next year, and he's, um, so he'll probably be submitting new paperwork for that.
So we should withdraw this document, am I correct? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to withdraw Document 313-13.
So moved.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, um, now we go back to Document 39-10.
Well, there's no items on it. We haven't got anything back from City Attorney.
Oh, we haven't got any? Okay. Um, what I would like to do, I'm sorry?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, so we need to, can we, um, send, uh, a reminder to the attorney then, so that he can send us the information back? Because we are waiting for how many items, Madam Chair?
Probably another dozen. It was like about 25 total. I think we did 13, and we have 12 to stoop.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That's 12?
I think we did 13 out of 25. I believe there's 12 left.
Oh.
Yeah, the balance, whatever.
Okay. Um, I would like to ask any of the three councils who voted against the city residency requirement law, if they will make a motion to reconsider.
With all due respect, Council, I wouldn't make that motion.
Okay. If there is none, uh, I would like to, uh, ask any councils to make a motion to suspend the rules and bring for discussion again the, uh, residency requirement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Questions, remarks?
Yeah, I think that we have a one-year moratorium at this point, if it's not brought forward through, um, I mean, I, I saw a newspaper article, a reporter said we could do it, but that's not what our rules say.
Uh, I ask the opinion of the City Attorney on this matter, and he said that two-thirds of the vote will, will be required to reconsider.
At this point, I would-
Not to reconsider, I'm sorry, to-
To suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules.
The rules. So there's a motion on the floor.
Council, will you?
For the Parliament, which rule are you looking to suspend?
To suspend the rule of discussing an item that has already been approved, uh, that, an item that has already come to the council and has been voted down.
Which, if you don't mind, which rule?
So we don't have to wait for one year.
Which rule are we looking to suspend?
I don't remember the exact, uh, rule, but, um, do you remember the? Okay.
I don't remember the number of it, but it is?
Rule 21.
Okay, Rule 21.
Mr. Plant, Rule 21?
Sure.
Rule 21.
Did he give you that opinion in writing, or did he?
I'm sorry?
Did the attorney give you that opinion in writing?
Yes, he did.
Can you share that with us, please?
Uh, let me, I, I forgot to bring it, but I, I believe that.
I saw it. Okay. So can we?
Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Let's, um, let's go by. Uh, can we take, um, five minutes recess?
Five.
In order so that the clerk can get the information?
Point of inquiry, though, which one are we talking about?
I'm sorry?
Which one are we talking about? Something we've already been on or approved?
The residency requirement that we voted down?
If you recall, the motion to approve the residency requirement law was not really voted down, but because of a lack of two-thirds vote, uh, it didn't pass. So that's the, uh, the motion to suspend the rule is being made in order so that we can discuss it again.
You're talking about the residency?
That's correct. That's correct. Again, would I, can somebody, uh-
Motion to take a two-second recess, just run back, yeah, because five minutes is like way too long. Just go get it and come-
There's a motion to take a recess of three minutes in order for the clerk to-
Second, thank you.
Get the information. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Roll the blades.
[coughs]
Second.
[coughs]
Second.
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 Well, rule nine is Wednesday.
Motion to come back from recess?
Go back into session.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay. Concerns? Yes.
I have read the city attorney's legal opinion to say that we should take our motion to reconsider at the meeting that it was at, and if we didn't take our motion to reconsider at the meeting that was at, we suspend the rules now to make a motion to reconsider. That's what he's saying. We suspend the rules, doesn't allow us to take up any item willy-nilly. It allows us to take a motion to reconsider at a non... Not at that same meeting, but at the next meeting. So if we made a motion now to suspend the rules, the motion then would be to reconsider, which would have to be made by someone on the prevailing side. That wouldn't be waived. That's not... This is not say that that is waived.
No, 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 that's not the case.
That's not what his legal opinion says. His legal opinion says the proper and effective procedures to suspend the rules for the purposes of reconsideration of the motion. If the motion is duly seconded and approved by at least six councils in a roll call vote, then the item may be moved for reconsideration upon a motion by a council who cast a vote on the prevailing side. So even with a motion to suspend the rules, according to the legal opinion that you provided us that was drafted by the city attorney, it says that that motion for reconsideration still needs to be made by someone who cast it on the prevailing side. That's what it says in writing from the city attorney.
When it says to reconsider the measure, not to reconsider the vote.
Right.
So it's the measure, so it's not to reconsider the vote, which in that particular case, one of the...
Yeah, anybody can move to suspend the rules.
Mm-hmm.
And that passes, you get six votes, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
So then, now the rules have been suspended, so we can consider reconsideration at a meeting that's not the same meeting. But in order to do that motion to reconsider properly, it has to be made from someone that was on the prevailing side.
No, no, that is...
That's what it says here in black and white.
Again, they are two separate actions.
Well, he even gives you a summary at the end. Suspend the rules, vote to reconsider, then vote on the issue again. So you've got to suspend the rules, you still have to vote for reconsider, and a vote for reconsideration still has to come from the prevailing side. That's what the legal opinion says.
Well, it would be made for reconsideration without having to ask any of the opposite... of the opponent's side. It would be... It will become automatic for reconsideration without...
No, that's not what it says in the opinion.
Well, it says that then the item may be moved for reconsideration upon motion by a councilor who cast a vote on the prevailing side.
Prevailing side, right.
Okay?
Then the matter may be taken up for reconsideration once more.
Okay.
That's not what we're talking about, though.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Council President?
Yes.
Yeah, we should vote on the suspension of the rules. And rule twenty-one is what would allow us to take that vote again, not rule eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And it's right here in black and white.
Okay.
So we are invoking rule twenty-one.
Okay, but rule twenty-one simply says that...
Rule other?
Because it was a final...
Rule eleven, I'm sorry?
Can you just read rule twenty-one?
Yes, rule twenty-one says the following. "When an ordinance or resolution has been finally rejected or disposed of by the city council, no ordinance or resolution which is substantially the same shall be introduced by any council member or committee at any time within twelve months, next following final action on such ordinance or resolution. This restriction shall not apply when a council has granted leave to withdraw on a previous ordinance or resolution."
Right, so we have not asked for any leave or withdrawal or anything like that. It was acted on.
Final resolution.
And we are now invoking that rule in order to suspend, waiting for one year, in order for us to be able to consider it again, to talk about it again. So that's the rule that we need to invoke.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but there's two things. One is that the city attorney's opinion has nothing at all to do with number twenty-one.
Exactly.
It has everything to do, so we have no opinion from the city attorney on rule twenty-one. All we have is a city attorney's opinion on rule twenty. That's the very first step. So right now, we're about to go someplace within our rules that we don't have clarity from the city attorney. And I just, for one, I'm a little concerned about just jumping in at ten-thirty at night when we're all a little tired and trying to deal with this issue when we don't have all the proper facts in front of us.
And I would like to say, Council President, that the same argument that Councilor LaPlante is making was made to me by several of the constituents that called me, who happened to be diverse in ethnicity and race, just in case, and told me that they wanted to be part of the discussion. They thought that it was foolish to take that vote so late, right? And this wonderful constituent also went out to say how important it was to try to do everything in our power to get back the residency rule, given that three people should not be able to make such a big decision on behalf of the city.
So I would argue then that if you agree with those constituents...
I'm just saying that's what they said.
Then you would agree that that argument right now shouldn't be taken.
Well, they said we should do everything in our power, and I think we've already have a motion to suspend the rules, and after that, we will invoke rule twenty-one and be able to talk about the residency rule.
I would argue, I would argue that the rule twenty-one, I think, is very clear in its spirit and what it's trying to accomplish. For example, I recall very specifically where there was a councillor on a zoning matter on South Broadway, the little mom-and-pop shop, and some of us were on the council at that time. They wanted to rezone something, and then they moved another street or another parcel over, and that was within the year, and the council president, now I said president, said you couldn't do that. You had to wait a year. So they had to wait a year before going in.
Right, they had to wait a year.
But what they had to do is they had that... The spirit is that you have to reintroduce something. What's trying to be done here, they had to reintroduce new business, go before the right, you know, go before the committee and do the normal actions. We already had a final resolution. So I'm not going to put words in the city attorney's mouth, but potentially what you may request or suggest is that you have to go ahead and put something new. You've got to put a new item on, because it's been finally disposed of.
I disagree. I disagree. I think that your assessment of what rule twenty-one is saying is not the same as I. For example, it reads, rule twenty-one reads that the final rejection, which it was finally rejected, okay? You can use that law, that rule, in order to discuss it again. You cannot discuss this item again for another year. So we're asking the suspension of waiting for another year, and we're discussing it tonight.
But you have to reintroduce it. You can't just take it off. I mean, you just can't pull it out of nowhere. This is not a new item and a new business. All of a sudden, you're just pulling something out without any kind of formal, proper procedures about putting a new item on board. That's what you have to do. If you're going to follow rule twenty-one and suspend the rules, you'll need to go ahead.
It doesn't say that. In rule twenty-one, nowhere does it say you have to put it in and reintroduce it as a new item. Where in rule twenty-one does it say that?
Well, if you're going to put a new matter, let's read it again. "When an ordinance or resolution has been finally rejected," which it has...
Right.
"...or disposed by the city council," which it has, "no ordinance or resolution that substantially the same shall be introduced by any council member or committee at any time within twelve months." So if you want to introduce it, you have to introduce it. And the normal way of introducing something is not without having the public notice requirements, which is what you're trying to do this evening, which is essentially ignore the public notice requirements by putting it as right now at ten-thirty at an evening without that.
But it's amazing how it's an issue for you tonight.
If you want to go ahead and do it...
But ten-thirty was...
Wait, 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 wait.
I thought I had the...
Midnight was not an issue for you.
Hold on, hold on.
Last night it was midnight. It was not an issue for you.
Vice President?
But it is an issue for you tonight that it is ten-thirty.
Ms. Abrams, let's keep our call.
Slick.
And let's keep our call and let's talk one at a time.
Slick.
Okay, let's talk one at a time, okay? Mr. LaPlante, are you finished or you...
I'm just trying, first of all, here's the actual point of personal privilege, is when you've been insulted by a fellow colleague, and I take right offense for you calling slick. So I just, and that's the...
And I'll say it again, slick.
That's the proper time to be...
Please, let's keep our call again.
So if we can work together on trying to figure out a way to do this properly and within the rules, and then, you know, then you'll probably get what you want. But going ahead and trying to do it at this point, I don't think, I think circumvents the rules, because I think if we all look at how we put new items together after it's been disposed of, you're looking to suspend the rules and putting a new item in. Right now, a new item is not being put in.
This is not a new item, Mr. LaPlante, because this item has not even gone to the mayor for approval. So this is a continuance of items that we still have to follow through.
Well, actually, Council President, can I maybe point information, just for the council? Two different thoughts here. One is, obviously, we agree to disagree. And I know people have very strong opinions on this issue, and I respect that. And I just encourage us all to please try to remain civil and professional, as we usually are to each other. I think one thing we all agree on is that the legal opinion that we all have in our hands relates to rule number twenty and not to rule number twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
We all agree on that. And, you know, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez is saying she wants to invoke rule twenty-one with suspension of the rules. I guess my respectful request would be, what would be the harm in doing that by getting a second legal opinion? It's going to buy you two more weeks.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to increase the public notice, which is one of the things that people are saying that, just like the other night, there is no one here. If that was the concern the other night, then let's do it with a little bit more notice and have people here that want to speak on it. That's fine. So my thought would be, let's get a legal opinion on rule twenty-one and not rule twenty, if that's what we're really talking about. I do think Councilor LaPlante does raise a valid issue, and he says rule twenty-one talks about reintroducing an issue. And I do want to point out, we were very clear because almost kind of creating that line item veto issue, as we went through each item, we did give it its own separate sub-document number. So we'd say thirty-nine dash ten A, thirty-nine dash ten B, thirty-nine... So thirty-nine dash ten, I don't know what the letter was, maybe F or G, but whatever that letter was, has been finally disposed of. And are we reintroducing that as an old business? Or are you... I think to get clarity, to wait two weeks to get some clarity, doesn't hurt any of us. I think it would help the process, and I think it would lend to the decorum of the conversation. If that's not what my fellow councillors stood to do, I respect that. But I just throw that out there as something to just... Because the one thing we definitely all agree on is that this legal opinion, which we were relying on, is on something else. It's on document twenty, not twenty-one.
Sorry, I don't know why they gave you that.
Okay, I think we have an option then. If the council feels that way, and I think with all respect for those members of the council who feels that we should get a legal opinion on rule twenty-one, what I would like to do is schedule a special meeting next Tuesday, which is...
Could we not just do it at the June third meeting as the first item of business?
I'm sorry?
Could we not just do it at the June third meeting as the first item of business?
I would like to treat this as a special meeting so that we can deal with this only and have people participate. So if we... Anybody has a calendar there?
Point of information, Mr. President?
Yes.
We are going to have a budget and finance hearing on Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? What time is that?
Six-thirty?
Huh?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay.
I mean, we can move it at five.
Can we?
We can start at five.
I'm sorry?
We can start this one at five.
No, not five o'clock, no. I think we can interject probably for about half hour. So we can do a seven-thirty meeting. Is that okay with you?
It won't be done in one hour.
Yeah, we should be able to... I mean, we are looking simply, we are looking simply for a legal opinion and then make a decision as to whether we want to take a vote on it or not. So it should not be, it should not take longer.
So what time is it going to be?
I'm thinking of seven-thirty. That way, the Budget and Finance Committee can meet at six-thirty and just interject for about half hour. Mr. Vazquez?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that sounds good.
What sounds good?
Huh?
What sounds good?
Now, we will have... We will have, we will have, we will have a special meeting next Tuesday at seven-thirty. It's the twenty-seventh, at seven-thirty, so that we can have a legal opinion on the use of rule twenty-one from the city attorney.
Right.
Okay, and then we can, if we, if rule twenty-one, if the opinion of the city attorney is that, yes, we can use rule twenty-one, then we should be able to discuss it briefly and then take a vote.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, Mr. President, before you move on?
Yes.
I want to make it perfectly clear that I do know how to use the point of information, point of clarity, point of whatever. And I think that when you go out and make statements through you, Council President, that our Councilor LaPlante uses not the names, the exact name, but if you think you're being subtle, you haven't been subtle enough, because it's easy to tell who you're talking about. So when I say that I need to clarify something that is obviously being thrown at me is because I know that you're throwing it at me, not because I'm making it up. And just the issue about being slick, you are a smart person. You do try to, you know, bamboozle in your own way, because you use your knowledge and your talent to try to bring things around to your way. But I have seen so many times how, for example, we were talking about the city charter, and I was talking about maybe possibly rearranging a little bit the housing committee to read that it could have economic development. Well, you at that night said it was introducing a new item. Yet, when we talked about the civil, the charter review again, that second time, you introduced a completely different item, completely different from what was being discussed, and that was acceptable. So I just want to call to your attention in public, in front of everybody, because I have nothing to hide, that it's not acceptable for you to do that. Either you be consistent, or we'll just say that you're being slick.
Council President, I just want to make no mistake, I was alluding to Councilor Alvarez when I thought that I was offended. So if there's any question as to who was, who was directing those comments, who it really was toward the councillor, that large councillor, I'm not going to carry it on any further. I think...
No, no, definitely not.
I think that the people who are watching, your councillor, you yourself, you know what's happening here, so...
There is no, there is no gain to continue...
I didn't try to insult him. I'm just calling him...
I understand, I understand.
...to something that he consistently does.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
What was the purpose of requesting an opinion from the city attorney?
What was the purpose?
Yeah.
Because, because the reason why I requested that is because the majority of the council feels that we should have a resident requirement law.
Majority of the council feels...
The majority of the council, yes.
Why was the amendment defeated?
Because one of the members of the council was absent, and she was not...
It wasn't the majority of the council.
Well, the major... Again...
The majority of the councils agreed to defeat it.
No, the majority, no. Only the minority defeated.
You need two-thirds vote.
Huh?
You need two-thirds vote to get it, right?
Three vote defeated the measure.
Right.
So the majority of the council feels that we should have a resident requirement law.
Okay, so you asked for this opinion?
That's correct.
So why are we going off on another rule if we got an answer to the rule that was requested?
I'm sorry?
Why are we going off to look at an opinion for another rule when we already had an opinion from...
No, 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 no. Because again, two of your fellow councillors feel more comfortable if we request an opinion on the use of rule twenty-one. That's the reason. That's the reason why...
So you did not request an opinion on rule twenty. It just came, he just did this?
Exactly, exactly.
Now you're requesting an opinion on rule twenty-one?
No, because it was my feeling at that time...
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, requesting.
No, 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 no. He asked me with that, why are you requesting an opinion on rule twenty-one?
No, no.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. But again, I don't respect for Mr. LaPlante and Councilor Bernard, we are doing that, so that we can... Okay?
No, we can, we have new business.
Okay. Okay. What we need to do then is to have a motion to continue the public hearing to... What we need to do then is to have a motion to continue the public hearing to of Document 3910 to this Tuesday, 7:30. There's a motion on the floor. It has been properly made. It has been properly second discussion. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Roll call, please.
Continue the public hearing?
To order.
Just, just.
To continue.
What's the, what's the motion?
The motion is to continue the public hearing on Document 3910 for this Tuesday at 7:30. Okay, that's the motion. Yes. But obviously, we're only going to deal with that one item at this, at that particular time. Roll call, please.
Counsel? Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey?
No.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Monte? Counsel Aquino?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez, noted, and Counsel, Counsel President Maldonado?
Yes.
Six.
Okay.
Pass.
Okay. Okay. Again, we're going to, a motion to table Document 3910. Motion has been made. Second, any, any second?
Second.
Motion has been properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, point and query. Document 3910 appears both on table matters and on public hearing.
It shouldn't be. It should be in public hearings.
Yes, but we are.
You want, right?
Yes, yes.
So can we remove it from pub, can we remove it from table matters?
No, no, no. We are simply tabling, we are, it's a motion to continue.
The public hearing.
The public hearing on Document 3910.
If I may, Counsel, the only reason I'm asking to table matters, those items that have already been passed upon remain tabled should they have to be brought up again under the public hearing.
So in other words, you had the charter review, public hearing continued. That doesn't substantiate?
That's correct. There are other matters that have not yet been heard, about 12.
I understand that, but.
We've heard about 13.
I know that, but on the table matters, 3910 says charter review.
Yeah, well.
It's also public hearing.
And it's in the public hearing section as well.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, is it in the table?
If the council prefers, I'll put it any way you like.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're going to have a special meeting, 7:30 on the, on Tuesday, the 27th. For the purpose, sole purpose of getting a legal opinion from the city attorney and discussing the residence requirement law, ordinance. Okay. Are there, are there any table matters that any council would like to bring forward?
39-10.
No? Okay. I don't blame you. Okay, then let's go into new business and then we will conclude our meeting. New business. Document 17014, transient vendor license is going to be sent to the ordinance committee. Document 17114, transient vendor license, ordinance committee. Document 17214.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take this item as an emergency.
Which item?
172-14.
Neighborhood block party, okay. There's a motion on the floor to take Document 17214 as an emergency.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Can you give us information as to this matter and, and whether, any documents you have been submitting, Mr. Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was a request by Mr. Fausto Nunez, who is the president of Alana, which is an organization, a neighborhood association in the Arlington neighborhood. And they made a request to close the streets, Alma Street between Myrtle and Bronfield Street on Saturday, May 31st. And due to the timing today's May 20th, it won't come back to the full council on time to, to make an, to, to do an approval. It will be from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I know that the petitioner has been before the chief of the police, and he presented him with the schedule of this particular event. We do not need to submit a, a particular form with a sign-off, usually as we do for parks, since it's just a street closing. Just notify the, the police department.
Counsel President, just to add to that, usually when it's coming out of ordinance for the neighborhood block parties, the big thing we always want is sign off from the police department and usually the verification that the auxiliaries are available because they help block the streets. And my understanding is that it's already in motion with this, so it makes perfect sense to take it.
Do you think that we should approve this pending that police?
Do you have it already? Do they already have it?
I do not have it with me.
So yeah, it's depending on the filing of their, of the police department.
Okay.
Okay.
Then why, I would like to enter a motion to approve Document 17214 pending the submission of a police.
Approval.
Police approval. Anybody will make the motion?
To move.
Motion has been made. Properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Shepherd now.
Okay, let's continue. Document, Document 17314, groundwork Lawrence going to the ordinance committee. Document 17414, Rumba en el Parque going to ordinance committee. Document 17514, security regulations at nightclubs, that's going to the ordinance committee. Document 17814, Oportunidad de Negocios OG, that's going to the ordinance committee. Document 17914, handicap parking, ordinance committee. Document 18114, appointment, Lawrence Historic Commission, that's going to the personal committee. Document 18214, appointment, Prosper, Prosper Hill Historic District Commission, that is also going to the personal committee. Document 18314, appointment to the planning board, personal committee. Document 18414, Assembly of Christian Churches is going to the ordinance committee. Document 18514, Lawrence Mettoon Community Coalition, request information, that's going to the ordinance committee. Document 18614, the Lawrence Mettoon Committee Coalition, that's going to the ordinance committee. Document 18714, Lawrence Municipal Airport Wildlife Hazard Assessment Grant, that's going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 18814, Lawrence Municipal Airport is also going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 18914, Lawrence Municipal Airport is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 19314, Fiscal Year 2015 Annual Authorization Revening Funds, that's going to the Budget and Finance Committee. And there is one more document, Mr. Clark?
Can we do that?
Huh?
19414.
19414? 19414, what, Budget and Finance, okay. Document 19414 is going to Budget and Finance Committee. And that's it? Okay, unless you guys would like to stay here to discuss anything further.
Mr. President.
I would like to enter a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, before we adjourn.
I'm sorry?
Before we adjourn, just a reminder that budget season started. We, we begin tomorrow at 6:30 p.m. here at the council chamber. And Thursday, it will be at 5:00 p.m. But every other, the rest of the, the hearings are going to be at 6:30, except Thursday, the 22nd.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
There is second.
Who, who makes the motion?
So move.
Motion has been made and properly second. Or in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You can stay behind, of course.